Good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order at 9:06 or something. The May 14, 2024 meeting of the Anarundel County Board of Health is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Dr. Toni Geddon, our health officer, you have the floor.
Good morning. Good to see you all and glad some of you were able to get out and vote this morning. Hopefully, we'll all have enough time to make that happen today. Just want to introduce the folks that are sitting with me at the table and the individuals behind me this morning. This is our new deputy of public health, Dr. Topay Bada, who joined us in February. And this is Jennifer Snyder, the director of disease prevention and management, but also the acting deputy health officer for operations. So I wanted to introduce them, but also to acknowledge the folks sitting behind me, our colleagues from the Mental Health Agency, Sandy O'Neil, Don Curtian, Megan Pringle, Peggy Cruz, Karen Siska Creo, Grace Tidings, and Donna Perkins. Thank you to all of them for their hard work in helping to put this presentation together and making sure I say all the right things today. All right. Just acknowledging our partner agencies again. Dr. Brown is not here this morning, but I'm sure you'll be hearing from her very soon. But Adrian Meckler and the Mental Health Agency are here and will be available to answer questions at the end. Just an overview of the budget and the employees. So we're at about $82 million as our operating budget. There are roughly 907 budgeted positions in the health department, and 823 of those are currently filled. And then you see just a list of the locations that we routinely operate out of. Our strategic plan is still active from 2023, reinvigorating the workforce, enhancing our infrastructure, and deepening and expanding community partnerships, and advancing health equity. So throughout the presentation today, hopefully, you will see those themes mirrored and discussed. But that's really what we are working to do as a health department. The health report card for the health department was just released a day or two ago. Couple of highlights, cancer and heart disease remain the leading causes of death in the county. We did see household income increase, but so did the cost of housing. And looking at the firearm deaths for residents between 2017 and 2021, looking at over 200 residents and over with deaths, and then over 300 hospitalizations due to accidental discharges. All right. We'll get right into it. Our gun violence intervention team, these are the six goals that ground that work and what we're doing in each of these areas and some of the accomplishments across FY24. So as always, we have regular meetings with the 52 members of this team. We also have active work groups that meet in between for data, education, policy, and environment. They do fantastic work in helping to drive us forward. We also work on legislation. So we will testify, we will help with policy briefs, put policy briefs out, and we'll also submit letters of support depending on what's coming up. For education, we focused on senior firearm safety. We know that there's a higher risk of suicide, particularly in older white males, and so coming up with firearm safety materials for that population has been important for us. Also, suicide prevention and gun lock rat cards, we'll get into gun locks more throughout the presentation, and we utilize the community health ambassadors to help us promote gun lock safety. We've also worked on a new user-friendly dashboard for gun violence. I think it's really important, and one of the things that we get a lot of questions about is our collaboration with the police departments in the county to really make sure that we have the data. And we thank both the county and the city for providing that to allow us to understand what's happening throughout the county. And then violence interruption, we'll get into what's happening and the program in Eastport, but that's really been the big piece this year that's taken quite a lot of effort from the team to stand up a violence interruption program in Eastport. But we've also begun planning for North County, and what does that look like? And so I'd like to thank the members of the council that are a part of that planning committee, Ms. Pickard and Mr. Smith, we appreciate your time and attention to these matters. Also, continuing our partnership with the public libraries and other partners to distribute gun locks throughout the county. We are well over 5,000 gun locks since we launched last April and continue to go strong. And then looking at victim support, this is the area where I think we have the most work to continue to do and most area to expand. But we have started doing resilience trainings for the community, and we're looking at other opportunities to really enhance what we can do around people who have been victims of gun violence. Here's just a little data on Anarundel County gun-related homicides and suicide deaths in the county, giving you demographic information. Between 2019 and 2021, we lost 47 residents to homicides, about half of those were black males. And generally, they tend to be younger, between the ages of 15 and 34. And we lost 93 residents between 2019 and 21 to gun-related suicides. As I mentioned earlier, older white males make up three-fourths of that group, looking at the over 55. And what are we seeing as trends in the county? So this just gives you a look at several years and where we are, what we saw in 2023. We definitely saw things increasing, and this is what we have so far in 2024. Just a little bit for the city and county, because we do sometimes see differences there. We saw in 2023, the city reached the highest number of homicides since 2016. And again, the majority of those victims were black males, and about half of the victims in Annapolis City were between the ages of 14 and 24. And so our focus in starting a violence interruption program there is specifically looking to engage youth and young men, we'll talk more about. Okay. Our gun lock distribution program, which started in April of last year, and initially was a partnership just with the Anarundel County Public Libraries. And they've done a fantastic job of really taking this on and owning it and promoting it. We cannot thank them enough for this, but it's also allowed us to expand to other partners. So we are working with Man Up Anarundel, which is a violence interruption program in West County, No Harm, which is a program run through the mayor's office for the city of Annapolis. The Community College also has gun locks to give out, and Department of Social Services has started to give them out at home visits when they're asking if there's a firearm in the home and you'd like to keep it secure, we have them. Also in conversations with the Office of Emergency Management and area pediatricians to get more cable locks out there. And so one of the things we wanted to note today is that about 53% of folks going to the hospital in Maryland for gun-related injuries are due to mishandling and an accidental discharge, right? It doesn't necessarily mean that it wasn't the person who could unlock it, but we know oftentimes it can be. We also know that suicides in youth are often committed by people who have access to weapons that aren't their weapons, they're not old enough, but they have access to it, they know where they are. And we've heard a lot from parents, grandparents, and other folks that hadn't really thought about this, particularly grandparents. The libraries have shared a number of qualitative stories with us. Yeah, my grandkids are coming, this is great, glad to have this. So thinking about even locations where a child does not always reside, but keeping it secure and secure from adults who may have suicidal ideations, right? If you know that your family member owns a gun, we want to make sure that if you should not have access to that, if you may be a danger to yourself, that the weapon is secured. And so looking at zip codes where the color-coded map, the darker blue, is where we've seen more residents coming to collect gun locks. The information that we collect is really age, race, gender, and zip code. We don't collect people's names or other identifying information, but this does allow us to see where residents are coming to get the locks. And then we know that the libraries are dispersed throughout the county, which helps quite a bit. So we're continuing to look at ways to expand this work. But so far, we've received really positive feedback from the community, and people continue to show up. And I have to thank both the libraries, communication departments, and the health departments, because a lot of it, at least early on, was very much driven by our ability to get it out to people and let them know that they were available to come and get them. And so we expanded the, what was a pilot, very quickly and much faster than we thought we would, because the libraries were shipping the gun locks between libraries like they ship books, like, oh, you don't have this one, I'll ship it to another branch. And we had to quickly scale it up because it was so popular, and people had questions about when is it coming to my library? So now it's everywhere. Trauma trainings, we think these are equally as important, making sure that people understand the skills and techniques to be resilient when you've experienced a trauma. We hosted these last year with over 100 participants, and we have another round happening right now as we speak. And I think we actually just finished up on the seventh. So the violence interruption program in Eastport, we'll get into it specifically, but sharing a little data on why Eastport was the initial location for this work. It's kind of twofold. One part of it was we were already working really heavily with the mayor's office and trying to figure out what we could do in the city. And this idea came up, an assessment was completed by Cure Violence Global, and then we went to move it ahead, and the county executive funded it in FY24. But we also really looked at a two-mile radius around the locations. There were a couple of different spots in Annapolis that we were looking at as potential locations for the program. But we found that around Harbor House and Eastport Terrace, there were a number of violent incidents and shootings within a two-mile radius that really made it important that we be there, but also the age of the individuals being shot in that area was very young. So we're looking at a number of children or young adults. So what did we start with? Information sharing. We held sessions in each of the neighborhoods that would potentially be a site. And in Eastport, residents expressed their exhaustion from violence, needing more engagement for youth, needing privacy when engaging with community members, right? So if programs are out there, if people needed help, how could they do that without the whole neighborhood knowing that they were reaching out for help and a whole host of additional resources? But they were open to it, and they were interested, and so that was really what we were looking for. We didn't want to implement a program in a neighborhood where they were not open or interested in something like that, because these sorts of programs are not successful if the community is not willing to engage with the individuals that are going to be out. And so here's just a little timeline on after the listening sessions were held and the location was selected to be Eastport. We went about putting out an RFP. We selected Kingdom Care in early fall, and we asked them to partner with another organization that had applied, a smaller organization called A Glimpse of Paradise, that is really familiar in Annapolis, from Annapolis. And many of the individuals working with A Glimpse of Paradise, and they would share this themselves, had been involved in illegal activity in Eastport many years ago and wanted to do something different in these neighborhoods. So in January, we hosted hiring interviews, hosted interviews, and they were panel interviews, including community members, health department staff, and Cure Violence Global staff members, really to make sure that we had the right individuals, members of the county executive's team and the mayor's office, to make sure that the right folks would be coming on and joining this program. And so between February and April, there was training. So Cure Violence Global comes out to conduct trainings, because it's one thing to be known in your community and to have an interest to do this, it's another thing to have the skill set to actually mediate conflict and to understand how to do this work safely, because it is inherently dangerous work. And so you want to make sure that the folks doing it know what the boundaries are, how to elevate something when it looks like it's, you know, getting too far, and also the database. So one of the distinct things about this program is the amount of data that's collected as folks are interfacing. And so the Cure Violence database will allow us to pull reports, and hopefully during our next Board of Health meeting, we'll be able to actually share some of that information with you all to talk about how many people they are interfacing with, how many touches they're having, how many conflicts they've been able to mediate. Those are the types of things that we hope to share. This is actually a picture of the team on the slide. It's been wonderful getting to know their individual stories. Some of them are victims of gun violence themselves, some of them have spent time incarcerated related to illegal activities, and they really want to do good work in the community. I've had the opportunity to talk to some community members, to ask, how do you think it's going, what are you seeing? And they've been really excited to see folks that they know and trust coming out, also really excited to see people doing something different with their lives. And they're on the ground really seven days a week at various hours. They're hosting meetings, they're having events for children, they've taken kids to museums. So it really is wonderful to see it actually coming to life. But we'll continue to monitor success and evaluate how it's going. And they are located within the HACA property, so I have to thank HACA for working with us to allow a decommission unit to be their offices, so they are onsite in the neighborhood, and they really couldn't be any closer if they tried. So I really appreciate that partnership with the mayor's office and HACA to make that possible. And then we introduced them to the community. Going through the slide, and my kid said, why do you have on gloves? There was no heat in the gym at the time, and it was February, it was very cold. They have since gotten heat in that building, and they will actually be hosting programming in that gym that hasn't been used for a while, so we're really excited to see that. But giving people an overview of what it looks like, what they can expect, how does it work, and introducing the team. And so a little bit about how it will work, as I mentioned, youth mentorship, conflict mediation, resource navigation, because the team consists of violence interrupters and outreach workers. So the outreach workers really put people on their caseload to see what folks want to do outside of just the violence interruption piece and the mentorship, right? If you're looking for employment or education, and this is why it's really important that these programs have access and start to understand what the other resources that are available in the county are, what are the other organizations that are working in employment or education so that they can refer people out. I cannot state enough that Cure Violence Global is not the end-all, be-all to gun violence, right? There are lots of social determinants that lead to gun violence and addressing that from a holistic approach and wraparound services, but I think that's where it was important to have an organization like Kingdom Care, who is very familiar with lots of other services in the county and also offers other services to host this program, and then collaborating with partners. And again, we'll be tracking measures and progress reports and hope to share those with both the community and you all in the very near future. And now what are we working on in North County? So the Violence Prevention Action Team that I mentioned, and again, thank you to Ms. Pickard and Mr. Smith for participating in this, but really looking specifically at youth violence in the northern part of the county, so thinking between Brooklyn Park and Glen Burnie and around that area, we also see clusters of violence happening there. And this program really allows us, it's a six-month planning grant, to engage the youth, ask questions, to survey folks, and to do planning around what needs to happen. So you have a brief timeline here on what we're looking at, and the action plan will hopefully be drafted in June and July, and then we will be prepared to share that out to see what the results are and what the youth think we should be doing about violence in that area. But we've been very excited to go down this path. This is a grant from the National Association of County and City Health Departments, and it also allows us access to national partners, the other cohorts that have been selected to do this work in other states and cities, so really having access to learning best practices across the country. We hosted our quarterly meeting in March of '24, March of '24, like, we're not still in '24. We hosted this meeting in March, that's our community meeting, and we held it in North County, because we wanted to share with folks what we're doing and get their feedback during that meeting on what they thought should be happening. So we had a couple of good solutions potentially and identification of problems. We continue to hear a lack of productive activities for children, really no matter where we are, or if there are productive activities, are they cost prohibitive? Are there families who are unable to access them because they can't afford them, or they can't afford to get the kid to the activity because of when it's held and what it means for parents working? They also mentioned structure in the household and peer pressure. They thought of things like youth art centers, conflict resolution training, expanding the Strengthening Families Program, parenting classes, and DEI inclusion activities. So I'll switch gears from gun violence into our Healthy Anarundel Coalition. We have been very busy this year. These are the participating organizations that are a part of Healthy Anarundel Coalition, and this was our second year of having Healthy Anarundel Day, which aligns with World Health Day. And we had four events held throughout the county and 22 additional events and additional other organizations, and nearly 13,000 visitors, because for that day, we were able to work with wrecking parks to get fees waived for people to enter the parks, and about 13,000 folks took advantage of that. So we're very excited to see that happening. The two work groups for Healthy Anarundel Coalition are the Mental Wellness Work Group and Healthy Eating and Active Living Work Group. Our priorities are still on mental health and looking at ways to reduce obesity. And so want to take the time to acknowledge those of you who put on green today, thank you. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we're very excited to highlight a number of activities going on throughout the county. We're also sharing what people do to keep their mental health a priority and to keep themselves healthy and safe. And so here's just a couple of activities that are going on as we speak and the goals with these groups. Excited to share these, mostly because it's something we didn't create, but students did. They had feedback on the Crisis Warm Line posters, and so they took it upon themselves when we asked them to, can you take a look at this and give us your feedback? Some of them decided, well, we're going to redesign them completely and send you what we think looks good. And so these were created by students, and we've been able to share these with the school system. These are the things that they thought people would want to know. You do see a real difference in calling versus texting. So we heard things from kids that said, you know, I'm not really, I don't know what happens when you call somebody, and am I comfortable with that? They're a lot more comfortable with texting, but understanding who will answer the call, what happens with your information, and will they tell anyone about that conversation? So these were the things that they thought were important, and they designed these wonderful flyers, and we're very excited that they did this without us asking. So Mental Health Awareness Month, the campaign, so again, thank you to those of you in green today. We are asking folks to tell us what does mental health and self-care mean to you? And there's a couple of different things that we've asked them to do. If you could submit pictures of what you do, oh, they put me on there, I missed that, I should have caught that. But we've asked you, so either pictures of yourself wearing green or things that you do to keep your mental health. And so that's a walking pad in my office, which helps my mental health. Others submit pictures of things they do with their families, it can really be anything. So we would encourage all of you, if you have a photo that you'd like to submit, please do so. We are also lighting buildings green again for May, so local businesses and hospitals, if they're able and have the capability of lighting their building up in green, we're asking them to do that. And then this year, we also have a student video contest, looking for submissions on mental health and what young people are doing to keep their mental health healthy. All right. So I'm going to switch gears again into our health equity work. We just updated this graph despite the fact that it's from 2022, there's still quite a delay in a lot of the data that we're using, but for a number of areas, things got worse. Don't really have a lot more to say about that, but poverty went up in a number of zip codes, households needing SNAP, ED visits, we did see increases there. So this is here, not for me to go over today, but for you to have as reference. And then this slide continues to be a part of our presentation, because as we present maps throughout other disease states or trends that we're seeing, I think this one is important to understand where we see the population with less than a high school education, where we're seeing lower median incomes, and where we're seeing higher populations of minority residents, and what that means as it correlates to other health disparities and social determinants that we see throughout the county. So as a part of our strategic plan, one of the goals that we laid out was to create a health equity plan for the department. There are health inequities literally everywhere, and so it's really easy for us as an apartment to say we're working on health equity, and we are. But what are we specifically looking to do? What are we measuring, and how are we, including the community, and which things they think we should take on at any given time, because we cannot tackle them all at once? So how are we prioritizing, and how are we working with the community to do that prioritization? And so we've been working with a consultant for the better part of six months, maybe a little longer than that, to identify opportunities for health equity, so looking at data, looking at maps, there will be new dashboards available to the public around health disparities, setting goals and objectives to make sure that we, as a department, know exactly what we're working towards, as well as the community, and how we can partner with others to move the needle. And we've started something new called Data Walks. So we've done a few of these, and I think Ms. Hummer was able to participate in one for maternal and maternal health. But what we're really trying to do is to present data to the community in a different way. A lot of the graphics you see here today are not very user-friendly, right? You have to spend a lot of time looking at them, trying to understand them. If you're not used to looking at tables and charts, it can be a little daunting. But Data Walks present information in somewhat pictorial style along with numbers. It looks very different, and it also puts the data up as posters or art for people to peruse and look at and ask questions, and so, and it's a guided way of taking people through the data and a different way of looking at it. So we hope that it becomes something that's a little more user-friendly and an engagement tool for the community. We've also been working with the community. So at the end of the year, we had over 100 community partners show up to participate in our Health Equity Forum and the Data Walk there, and we've also been able to do four focus groups and 22 interviews to gain youth and adult perspectives on where we should be going. So as this plan is finalized, of course, we will be sharing it out and looking for your feedback, but this is what we're working on to have a health equity plan for the entire department. I'll skip this one and keep going. Sorry, if you have the opportunity to meet Keith, he is fantastic. I would implore you to watch the video, but our community health workers do a lot of fantastic work supporting us in our health equity work and supporting our partners. Our community health equity forums, this is something that started during the pandemic as a way to make sure we were getting information out to residents. It is streamed on Facebook, it happens once a month, and it's continued. And we continue to get anywhere from 50 to 70 participants every month coming to learn about a variety of topics and health equity-related issues. And so there's just a list here of different things that we've come to talk about in that meeting. If you haven't attended or haven't attended in a while, please join us. They happen every month, once a month, on, I believe it's the third Monday of the month. Please join us. And then our community health ambassadors program. This is another program that started during the pandemic to make sure that we were actually getting out into neighborhoods with trusted voices and people who were familiar to the community, people who were not government employees, people who were not necessarily healthcare workers, to talk to folks about why they should be vaccinated or to answer their questions. And we've continued this program with be vaccinated or to answer their questions. And we've continued this program with seven organizations, allowing them to hire individuals. And then we have a pretty extensive training program. And we've changed the topics. So looking at access to care, behavioral health, community safety, and weather preparedness as it relates to health. So some of the things that we've been able to do through the Community Health Ambassador Program, building capacity for things like Narcan training and mental health first aid training. We've also been able to spread the information around the Healthy Babies Equity Act and people's access to now, if you are pregnant, your ability to gain access to insurance regardless of your status as a resident. These things have been really important also as we see more extreme changes in our weather, particularly during the summer, how to keep safe from things like heat stroke, and what are the sorts of materials we can give out to residents during those times. So as I mentioned, we, at the Health Department, train the Community Health Ambassadors. So we don't just tell them, hey, here are your topics and run with it. This is just a calendar pictorial of some of the training that we've done for, for folks. So health literacy training, mental health first aid training, and I have to thank the Mental Health Agency for helping us to get that off the ground and started, overdose program training. And so we're very excited and proud of this work and proud of the work that they do. And this year, we've been able to move into having the mental health first aid become a train the trainer. So a number of the Community Health Ambassadors are now trainers for mental health first aid and they can go out into their communities and train people to be trainers and expand this wonderful resource. So we're very excited about that. This is just a little timeline of the last year or so with the Health Ambassadors and the number of people that they've been able to touch, educational materials they've been able to give out. And each organization is looking at a specific kind of geographic area in the county and/or racial or ethnic cohort. So we have health ambassador groups that are focused on our Korean residents, our Hispanic residents and our Black residents, and they are moving throughout the county in various ways. Just a little bit more of what they've been able to do. As I mentioned, they are trained to be naloxone instructors. So they've been able to train 69 community members, 95 community members in mental health training and continuing to give out things like COVID test kits and hand sanitizer for folks who want them. And mental health awareness sessions is really where we started to make sure that communities who maybe there's more stigma related to mental health are even just starting to have a conversation around what does it mean? What does mental health mean and why is it important? So we've been able to engage over 18,000 residents. This is just a quick picture of some folks at the Mental Health First Aid Training. And then I'm actually going to move past this one, but we do a lot of work with emergency preparedness and response work. And I would ask you to take a look and read that one. And I'm going to switch gears into behavioral health. So as the Anarundal County Health Department and the Mental Health Agency, we make up the Local Behavioral Health Authority for Anarundal County. And this year, I've been working on community plans and priorities. So embracing behavioral health and mental wellness and looking at things like individual families having the support to manage behavioral health issues and that all people are physically, mentally and emotionally, emotionally healthy are the priorities. And there's just a little bit here on education and prevention. You hopefully will be hearing much more about us, from us around prevention in the mental health and behavioral health space because I think it's very important. And Sandy and I talk about this quite often on how we've done a lot and continue to need to do a lot around treatment and making sure that folks are in recovery and what does that look like? But what are the things that we can be doing to help people build more resiliency on the front end and have the skills to prevent as many mental health crises and more severe issues. And so really looking at what is the quality of care that's being provided in the county? And as the Local Behavioral Health Authority, that is one of the things that we should be looking at, making sure that the quality is important, is held to the right standard and looking at equity. So who has access to behavioral health services? What are the policies and practices that maybe are keeping some people out of the system and making it easier for others to participate? And how can we balance that? As well as access, we know that there's not enough access in some areas or for specific cohorts like youth, for instance. We know that there's not enough. And so what are we looking at and how can we plan for those things? Okay, so this is just a quick timeline. If you're not familiar with what the Local Behavioral Health Authority is or how that authority was granted to us in 2021, the state formally recognized the Mental Health Agency and DOH as the Local Behavioral Health Authority. And since then, we've really been working together very closely to make sure that we are engaging providers in the county in a number of different ways. There's a monthly provider meeting for folks. It's an open forum. If you have questions, please, they can come, ask us things, get information, and it also allows them to interface with one another. So if there's a particular specialty that you don't have or a resource that you're looking for, at the beginning of each of those meetings, they ask everyone, please introduce yourself. Tell us what organization you're from and what you do there. And that helps a lot. And we continue to see new providers joining that call. Of course, people fluctuate and they come and go, but there are still a number of folks who will say, this is my first time. I'm glad to be here. There was a very successful annual symposium held this year looking at the power of connection. There were a couple of topics covered. Resiliency and equitable care, depression and mental health in African American men, considerations for the LGBTQ plus and gender affirming care, social drivers of health and better outcomes, and connecting wellness, well-being and neuroscience. And so there were, it was a huge turnout, actually, 180 attendees. And a good number of those folks were in person. And it's a lot of work and I have to thank Sandy and Adrian for pulling these sorts of activities together to make sure that we are not only watching the quality of the care, but trying to enhance the quality of the care through trainings and these forums. Right. So our behavioral health, Be Well AA, if you want to, if you want a magnet for your car or anywhere else, let us know. I can always identify Sandy's car because it has Be Well AA on the back of it. But making sure that we are boosting people's emotional literacy, reducing stigma around mental health and practicing acts every day again as a preventive resilient activity. What can you be doing every day to enhance your well-being? And helping individuals engage in help-seeking behaviors. What does that look like? Cannabis. We shared this the last time that we were here because we've started to monitor with the legalization of cannabis, the hospitalizations and various age groups that are hospitalized for cannabis. We're seeing a slight decrease, but we'll continue to keep our eyes on that. And check it out. Part of what we think may have happened because it actually started to increase before legalization officially took place is whether or not after information about it being legalized, changed people's behaviors and perceptions around it. So you saw it really early, kind of after it was announced, the increase starting. And so this is an area that we'll be working on pretty heavily this year. We're excited to have some opportunities to talk to parents about safe storage, not dissimilar from gun locks or other things that if you are taking cannabis, how are you doing so in a way that your children don't have access to it? Either a child that's too young and thinks maybe you're edible as candy or a child who was old enough to know what they're taking, but should not be taking it. So those are some things that we'll be working on, but also just making sure that we're putting accurate messaging out there around what the risks are. Smoking is still smoking. And from a health perspective, it's still bad for your lungs. And so it is legal, just like cigarettes are legal, but we will be talking about the dangers of smoking and vaping and what that means. And so trying to put out some more messaging around vaping in particular is going to be really important, vaping both cannabis and nicotine. Right. Our Wellmobile. We are newly in Glen Burnie. Very excited about this. We have more access, expanded hours through the week through telehealth services and also weekend hours. And excited about wound care coming on board because we do see a number of folks who are using drugs, having wounds that we need to make sure that they're taken care of and that we're helping it to educate them on. So we're excited to see that happening. And here's just a little snapshot of some of the numbers for the Wellmobile and our ability to actually refer them, refer the 517 residents that we've served out into the community. Our goal is to get services started on the Wellmobile, but then with our hub and spoke model, how do we refer you out to a community provider? How do we help you find a place close to you or a provider that is of your liking to continue your journey to recovery? And then opioid intervention and prevention. So we had a name change, like the rest of the state. Instead of being opioid intervention teams, it used to be the O I T. It's now overdose prevention team. And that was done for a couple of different reasons. The emphasis on opioids is definitely still needed, but also you are seeing things like fentanyl and drugs that are not necessarily opioids. So you may not consider yourself an opioid user. Maybe you're using cocaine, but things are laced in various ways. And we also want to make sure that whatever we're doing as much as we can is really addressing everyone with substance use disorders, right? We don't want it to just be, oh, we're talking to this group and they're not talking to me. We want it to be as open as possible. So really looking at overdose prevention and not just specifically opioids. And what has that meant? It's meant a couple of different things. Move to the next slide. But it's meant for us that, how are we talking about it? What does it look like? How are we calculating the numbers? And looking at the substances involved in fatal overdoses. So working with the behavioral health team and our EPIs to understand when people are overdosing, what is in their system, right? What are we actually seeing from toxicology reports? And more often, there is a lot of polysubstance use. So even if there is an opioid onboard, we're seeing other things as well. And I think that's another reason it's important to broaden our language around it and not just specifically always focus on opioids. So our joint opioid-related data dashboard is available and it's updated once a month and you can find it on our website. But here's just a little information on what you can find there if you have not had an opportunity to check it out. And then our harm reduction efforts. So harm reduction is really looking at practical ways to reduce negative consequences for people. So things like wound care, right, of yes, this is a consequence of substance use, but we don't want your arm to get infected. We don't want this, you to become septic. We want to make sure that you are as safe as possible, no matter where you are in your journey. And so looking at ways to engage people, looking at ways to meet people where they are, looking at ways not to judge where they are at that moment, but understanding that hopefully by building those relationships, when and if people are ready for recovery, that they'll come back, that we'll have those relationships, that they will have access to the materials that they need. And so we developed last year a Harm Reduction Advisory Council. So there are 55 members, including 20 people who participate in our syringe services program, right? So we want people with the lived experience and people who are actively using, which was not a small feat. It's not a comfortable thing for people to join a committee like this and talk about their substance use or their experiences. And so we really thank them for their time, but helping us understand what people need and understand where we should be going and to take our ideas and thoughts to this committee to kind of vet them and to give us really great feedback. So this group has been fantastic and hope to see them doing more in the future. We also released a few months ago, what we're calling Health to Go Machines for Harm Reduction. And like usual, we have wonderful partners that are working with us on this. These machines have Narcan in them. They have masks and other P P E, COVID tests, and then fentanyl and xylazine test strips. And there are seven machines throughout the county in libraries, correction, both of the correction centers, Department of Aging and Disability in West County. So it's in the intergenerational center and then the HACCA property in Annapolis. And so so far, since mid-March, residents have taken just under 700 Narcan kits from the machines. We'll continue to share this information, but wanted to make sure that folks understood how we decided where to put machines and so this looks at the number of overdoses in the county. The darker blue areas are have higher levels of overdose. And so we wanted to make sure that the machines where overdoses were happening. We will be putting another machine in our Glen Burnie Health Center. Currently, it's located in the HSB building here in Annapolis as a placeholder while we had some construction going on there, but that machine has been very popular. So we will not be moving it over to Glen Burnie. We're going to keep it there and add another one to our Glen Burnie Health Center in addition to the locations that you see here. Stigma reducing initiatives. Always excited to see the community getting into it with us to say mup is hope, help is here, denial is deadly, show us your sign. These are just some of the campaigns that we have been able to have this year. And then I was actually really excited in a meeting recently to learn about our overdose outreach success. So we, last year, were able to start having seven-day-a-week responses to non-fatal overdoses in the county. So if, for the 235 overdose survivors in the county, we have attempted to outreach 100% of those individuals. For 55% of them, we've made contact with and then 25% of them have been linked to treatment as a subsequent outcome of our outreach. And I am very proud of this team and their work in this area and making sure that we're actually getting out there and understanding these numbers and connecting with people. I think it speaks a lot to having peers available to talk to folks, people with the lived experience. They've done great work. So we will be hosting our first suicide prevention. An all-day conference and we're excited about it. It's in the, at the Community College on June 25th. If you have any interest in registering, it'll be held from 9:00 to 4:30. For professionals, there will be continuing education available, but looking at ways to prevent suicide. It's going to, we have a new suicide prevention coordinator and she's doing fantastic work. So this is one of the first things that will be as a result of her joining the department. But Help Healing and Hope Summit 2024, we hope to make it an annual event, but we will see. Firearms retailers. So here's just a little update on where we are with firearm retailers in the county. As of April 17th, we've distributed just under 80,000 pieces of material to the 31 gun shops in the county and we are also conducting compliance visits. And so far, so good. I really want to thank the staff that are doing this work. This is, we do compliance visits for things like food inspections. This has been different. It's been a learning curve for sure, but they're doing great work. And so as the courts have ruled in our favor to continue to do this, we hope that it has the impact that we wanted to, but so far, 20 site visits have been completed. 13 were compliant, two non-compliant and five other. And that other category is maybe those businesses have closed or they're actually operating just slightly out of county lines. So we'll continue to keep you posted on how those are going. I'm going to move through this one, but please know that we have a new report out on trends in youth suicide in Anarundal County. And then the Mental Health Agency. Thank Adrian and her team for adding this information to the presentation so we could share it with you today. But this slide just goes over the things that they do and everyone is aware of the warm line and crisis, but also there are other activities happening. So liaisons with the criminal justice system, they're monitoring complaints as a part of our LBHA, trying to reduce barriers for people to receive services and then are responsible for monitoring services in the public behavioral health system, specifically medical assistance providers. And so also monitoring the 104 grantees that receive funds through the Mental Health Agency. So what are they seeing as far as trends? In 2022, there was an all-time high for crisis response. So the warm line mobile and crisis intervention. And talking to them about what they're seeing now, it seems to be leveling off, but the complexity and the acuity of the cases but the complexity and the acuity of the cases has increased and that has not. And the demands for children still stay high. Here's just some numbers again for you to look over when you have the opportunity to understand the number of individuals served in these various programs. And then crisis response, when are the calls coming in? About 43% of the dispatches are outside of business hours, but this graph gives you an understanding of when residents are calling into crisis. And then looking at Warm Line calls and post-COVID services. So we're still about 20 to 30% higher than pre-COVID, even though it's leveling off a bit, but the acuity is not, which then requires folks to spend more time with individual cases. And then this slide looks at what is the Mental Health Agency doing as it relates to their own services rendered? So crisis response, but then also the impact through the monitoring of the Public Behavioral Health Service System. And so the number of people touched either directly or indirectly through the agency. And then looking at children, what are we seeing from Warm Line calls and the dispatches as trends? So again, in 2024, so far, we'll see where we continue to be at the end of the year, but the projections are a little bit lower, but acuity continues to be a concern and definitely still hot, much higher than pre-pandemic. Stabilization services, about 45% of patients reported a decrease in the intensity of the behavior and about 59% of parents reported a decrease in the perception of a problem. And so we think that leads to saying that these services are working, but how do we keep them up and how do we keep them going? Some of the challenges that I know you all are aware of for the crisis response system, the wonderful model that we have here in Anaronda County with partnerships through the police and the assigned officers. Right now, there are vacancies on the team, there are four vacancies. They will be looking to fill those, but the police department definitely has to just determine and prioritize where to fill vacancies first, because these are not the only vacancies that they have as a department. So what does that mean if we're looking at a reduction in the number of offices assigned? Looks at a reduction in the number of folks that can be served. We'll continue to monitor that and let you all know where it lands, but just wanted to make sure that folks are aware that that's one of the big challenges that they're facing right now, along with the increased acuity. And so just really quickly, Maryland Consortium on Coordinated Community Services. This is a part of the blueprint legislation, but having hub and spokes to have more mental health resources available to children in Anaronda County Public Schools. And so as the L B H A for the county, we've been selected as the hub and will monitor the spokes who receive funding through the consortium to do this work. And so it's really an extension of the work that the L B H A is already doing, but looking to assure the coordination of services and good fiscal management. Right. And then disease prevention and management. I'm very excited that COVID is in the middle of the presentation or towards the end now and not up at the top. But I think this slide is important because it does show where we've been and where we are now as it relates to the leading causes of death in the county. Just continuing, we do continue to monitor things like hospitalizations and immunizations, but we're also continuing to look at wastewater. And that really is our most reliable tool at this point to understand. Most testing that people are doing is happening at a rapid test, it's not reported. And so understanding when there are increases in the county, hospitalization data, as well as wastewater really helps us to understand that. But expanding wastewater to really better fill out, what does it mean for respiratory illness season in general? So R S V and flu as well. And so we're working on a dashboard that hopefully will be released very soon. So it's not just a focus on COVID, but looking at all of those other respiratory illnesses to present and make sure people are aware of. Of course, we have seen a tremendous decrease in the number of people who are being vaccinated at this point, but we continue to stress its importance, particularly for high-risk individuals, but really for everyone. And then our Healthy Communities Program. This is one I'm gonna highlight because you'll hear about it in our budget presentation shortly. And what we've done here, so we, at one point at the peak of the pandemic, had about 200 additional employees working specifically on COVID. We are now down to less than 15 of those individuals who were hired for those purposes. But what it has allowed us to do is to expand the hours of services that are being offered at our health centers. So before the health center staff would rotate between, so Glenn Burney Health Center and Maggot and Parole Health Center were usually never open at the same time. Now we're able to serve folks five days a week at all of those locations with that additional staff, as well as having, continuing to have the mobile capabilities. So the homebound vaccinations, our ability to vaccinate in shelters for people experiencing homelessness, our ability to go out and vaccinate at schools and senior centers, the Chinchen Centers. We've been able to keep that capacity. And so when you see the Healthy Communities Program in our budget presentation, this is what we're referring to. It's our ability to serve more people. And we've been able to see about an 80% increase in the individuals served at the health centers as a result of that and about a 30% increase in our vaccinations administered. So we're very excited that Glenn Burney and Parole Health Center are open five days a week and sometimes evenings and weekends when we are really pushing things like back-to-school vaccines. And here's just a little bit of those specific numbers. One thing that I wanted to spend a little bit of time on today is syphilis. We continue to see, and this is nationwide, alarming increases in syphilis and then congenital syphilis, so babies born and exposed. About a 35% increase. And so we will be looking at ways to engage and educate the community on how to protect themselves, but also what are the signs and symptoms? Obviously, syphilis is treatable, but you do have to come out and get treated and we want people to do that. And we definitely want pregnant mothers to do that because congenital syphilis can be very dangerous. So infectious disease prevention and control, there's just a little bit on our TV cases in the county and what we're doing around those. It's very important that we continue to keep folks evaluated and keeping TV under control. And chronic disease and prevention, what are we working on? So increasing lung cancer screenings, trying to reach more African-American women for breast and cervical cancer screening. As I mentioned earlier, vaping and smoking cessation for youth. We'll talk during the budget presentation about Juul funding that came as a result of those, not abatement funds, but the Juul funds that came from the lawsuits and what we'll be doing with those to make sure that we're educating kids around the dangers of vaping. So tobacco enforcement and community education continue to be pillars of this program. And then just a little bit on the Brooklyn Park Food Pantry. We continue to serve a good number of families. It's definitely decreased since the pandemic, but we've gone back to the model of actually, please come in and shop and receive the education around healthy foods. So it's really more than just a pantry. There have been opportunities for things like cooking classes, but understanding and labeling the foods of what is green, and you may be able to see it slightly here, but green, orange and red, things are labeled to let people know what's very healthy and explaining what they should be eating to make a healthy meal and a balanced meal. Family Health Services, I'm gonna skip on a little bit because I know we've covered some of these in the past. But maternal health. So this Saturday, we completed what may be our last, we'll see, maternal health listening session, specifically looking at Black mothers and what we can do to change the glaring disparities we see in morbidity and mortality. And so I think Ms. Hummer for coming out to our second session and learning a bit more. But what we're trying to do is a maternal and infant health task force is to understand what are the barriers and how can we be doing better in the county? But as a health department, this isn't something we can do alone. So we have a wonderful list of members here for you to understand who's participating here, how we're bringing folks together and it's actually missing maybe one or two. But this group has been very engaged and very excited about looking at the disparities, but also understanding what are the assets in Anaronda County? What do we already have that maybe we're just not aware of or not letting people know about? I'm gonna skip through this PSA if you have an opportunity to watch it. Chanel is, or at the time was a resident of Anaronda County and was kind enough to share her story with us to run PSAs. And so here's a little bit on task force progress and this is, these are some pictures, I believe, actually, from the one Ms. Hummer was attending. We kicked off in November. We're doing assets and strength mapping and needs assessments, but also these community listening sessions, which has been really informative. We've heard a lot of great things that we, as the group of professionals on the task force, would not be able to come up with without the community's input. And so looking at better ways to engage them, but also understanding that the engagement needs to be ongoing and not just the listening sessions. So we'll be looking to create a community advisory board and at each of the listening sessions have shared that information for folks who want to stay on and stay engaged with us to make sure that as we're coming up with plans, we have a group to go to to say, hey, what do you think of this? And how does this work for you? Childhood Asthma and Lead is a relatively new program in the Health Department. It began, it began in March of '23 and we've been able to serve 235 families since the program started. And we're really looking at doing things like education, but this is one of the few programs that we actually have. Things like durables to give to families to help them reduce triggers for asthma. So we're able to give out HEPA filters and vacuums and things that they can use to understand what's happening when their children may be having asthma attacks. We also see a disparity in Black children needing almost double or being in the emergency room, almost double the rate of the general population. So here's a little slide to share where we're seeing asthma emergency department visits between 2018 and 2022. And we're focusing a lot in these areas and they've been doing some really wonderful work. The other half of that program is lead, which is not necessarily new, but it did transfer from Disease Prevention and Management into Family Health Services and it pairs really nicely for this program. But looking at children who are tested for their serum lead levels, making sure that we're getting kids tested, but also if they have an elevated level, what are we doing to make sure that they have been, they're in care? And are there, what are the exposures and how do we mitigate those exposures? And we've seen things, we've seen a disparity in Asian children specifically around spices and pottery containing lead that are coming from other countries. So here's a little similar graphic on lead. Dental services continue to, the biggest challenge honestly is hiring dentists and keeping them onboard. State salaries for dentists aren't great. And so we do have challenges there, but that program has continued to provide wonderful services despite those shortages and continue to grow things like our sealant programs, serving even more children with A C P S through fluoride and sealants throughout the year. Let's get through reach and medical assistance and move into school health. I'm gonna touch here because this will definitely be a part of our budget presentation, but understanding the number of health room visits, crisis interventions, health screenings and educations provided and home visits and referrals for school health. We, when I was here last, I told you, we were looking to start a new telehealth model that has officially launched as of January in Tyler Heights. 25 students have enrolled and looking to launch at Van Bocklen Elementary as soon as possible. But you actually see Dr. Marcy White on the computer screen there with the nurse from Tyler Heights Dale and the student. So this is exactly how it works. If we think a child needs to go see a medical provider, if they have signed the appropriate consents, we can start a visit with them and their parent can join the telehealth visit if they're available. And then it also allows parents to have better understanding of what federally qualified health centers can provide for their entire family. This took an enormous amount of work to get one pilot launched, but we've been very excited to see it happening. And I want to thank A C P S and Total Healthcare for their partnership in this work. I'm gonna move into some of the individualized care plans. We talked about asthma, but what you see with your school health staff are creating specific care plans for students and hoping to set goals to decrease the number of times a student experiences asthma symptoms during the day, decreasing the number of times a student is absent due to those symptoms and increasing the self-management skills of those students. And what we see kind of overwhelmingly is that our nurses and health assistants are successful in helping children better navigate their asthma, but also their diabetes. We have a number of children who are diabetic in the school system and it is a very tricky disease to manage even as an adult. So looking at how we can help children gain self-management skills and miss fewer days and understand their blood glucose readings. And then I'm gonna move, this is also a new program. We are partnering with Aging and Disability, so we're at the other end of the age spectrum. But because we provide vision and hearing screenings in the school systems, Aging reached out to us and said, hey, could you help us with the screenings? We'd like not to have, some of the vendors they were working with, they had some concerns. And so now we've been able to go to senior centers or will start going to senior centers twice a year to provide those at no cost to seniors. So Aging has been a great partner in that and that is just another way for us to get out into the community, which we're very glad to be doing. Wanted to touch on because I think every time I've been a part of one of these presentations, we have to talk about the turnover rate for school health staff. So you'll see the trends. Unfortunately, this year, we have not seen that go down much, much higher, more than double the rate of pre-pandemic rates. And this is why we continue to push for more salary and benefit increases for this group in particular. So just a little bit about the reasons for resignation. And then what are we doing about it? The Karen and her team did a fantastic job of really reallocating funding for certain positions to create a full recruitment team specific for only school health. So of course, we have an H R team for the department, but with their ongoing needs and the number of people needed to hire. So what is most impressive, I think, is they've got it down to such a science that the average vacant time after recruitment is about two days because they are recruiting and turning people over all the time, that they have people that are in the queue and ready to get going. And so we're not necessarily seeing that impact in the schools. I think continuity is important. It'd be great to have that sort of continuity where you don't have the subs and you have the school nurse that you're familiar with. But we are able to staff those positions, which is very important. But it also costs a lot to train individuals and to have this level of turnover is something that we have to manage every day. And so this slide just gives you a bit of a breakdown on what it costs. Health assistants in particular to train because we are, so about 20 days of mandated training for those individuals. There's a little less for nurses, but while we're training you, someone else is a sub in that classroom. So essentially, we're paying two people for one position while someone is being trained and someone else is subbing into that class. And then last, but certainly not least, our environmental health program. So food services, we've inspected just under 4,000 inspections for more than 2,800 licensed food services facilities. And one of the things that this group and environmental health as a whole have been working on a lot is the changes in technology and making sure that people can submit things electronically, that the staff have access to technology that make their days easier. But a lot of these programs have to be customized and created. And so that takes a tremendous amount of time, but they are working on it and I think it's gonna make our programs much, much better. Rodent control, in 2023, we were able to increase our services to include three City of Annapolis communities, Eastport Terrace, Harbor House and Robinwood. And I think this is the one that we hear from you guys on a pretty regular basis about. Complaints from residents about rodents or trash or other issues. And so just wanted to make sure that we highlighted what we're doing in this area, what we can do. So educational materials provided, free pesticides and things that we can do to make sure that we're keeping residents as rodent-free as possible. So here, it's just a breakdown on the number of properties that were selected to be surveyed between June and October. We're coming back up on that season. Almost 500 free pesticide services and almost 6,000 property assessments. And then the number of violations and what those violations were for. So of the just over 1,000 violations, 600 were rodents, almost 200 for improper trash storage. So of the just over 1,000 violations, 600 were rodents, almost 200 for improper trash storage, exterior maintenance violations, which could be any number of things, and then pesticide services referrals. Our oral rabies vaccination program, um, takes a lot of coordination to make sure that we are getting the staffing to actually do it, but getting it out there. And we will be getting started again this year. We also hear a lot about this one from you guys, uh, water wells and sewage disposal systems. So here's just a little bit of the number of, uh, properties. There are 48,000 properties served by private water wells and 41 onsite disposal systems, which is a lot. Uh, but in this county, we do a tremendous job compared to a number of other counties in the state. And being able to get permits back to people, actually go out and do, um, all of the testing necessary to find out if you can have a septic system. And they're, one of the reasons we've been able to do that is that as a county, we have invested in our environmental health staff and we have historically paid them, um, higher rates than the state of Maryland. And this year, that changes, um, the state of Maryland because there've been so many problems across the state. And it's done things like hold up developments and others. The state has really taken a look at this. And so, uh, I'll put my plug out there for next year. We will be asking for changes to environmental health staff salaries. We'll be working with county HR to do salary surveys, et cetera. But I think it's important that we remain competitive to make sure that we're able to serve residents at the level that we're able to do it now where they don't have delays and we can do everyone's, uh, perk testing on time. Uh, and folks are not waiting two years to get a perk test. And that's it.
It's always tremendously impressive, the work that y'all do as a department. I have, sure, we're gonna have some questions. So Ms. Hummer?
Um, yes, thank you. It's, as Ms. Bickerd said, it's incredibly impressive, everything y'all do. I'm, every time, I'm amazed at how much y'all are able to accomplish. I have a couple of questions. You said that only about 30% of children are tested for lead before age six. Is there, are children only tested if there is, are some warning factors? Is it something that should be mandatory for children to be tested for lead?
Yes. What we see is that a lot of kids aren't tested, but they should be. You should be lead tested before you go to school. Then there are also environmental questionnaires that you should be asking about. Are, do you live in a home that was built before the 1970s? Do you know if there's any lead? Those sorts of things that would lead to additional screening, uh, for children. And so what we're finding is that a lot of kids have not been tested. And then we'll find years on, and there's no way to reverse the damage done by lead exposure, which is why you want to make sure you find it as soon as possible and to get those children tested and treated and to find out what is the source of the exposure so you can stop it.
But really, at this point, we don't, we don't have any mandatory testing for any children?
Technically, it is, right? But the, it, the only kind of teeth to enforce that would be to not to allow children to go to school, uh, which is not something that you really want to do, but, yes.
So, um, continuing on with testing, um, and I had asked about this last time too, and it, because I've read about it and it seems to still be increasing the, um, syphilis for the children. Are, is that an automatic screening when new, when babies are born? Are they, is that one of the screening tests to test for syphilis?
So I'm gonna give that question to either of my colleagues. But what I didn't say about Dr. Bada is that she's a board-certified OBGYN, so.
So no, it's not a mandatory newborn screening test. It's one, the way that we evaluate it is by testing the mother. There are different points during pregnancy where syphilis is tested, usually at the first prenatal visit, mid-trimester, like 28 weeks, and again at, um, um, about like four weeks before delivery, like 35 to 36 weeks when they do like the blood test and everything. And now there's new legislation that passed that like, um, requires it to be done on delivery. So when you show up to the hospital, but sometimes that's a little bit too late, right? So obviously trying to catch them in to make sure that they get adequate treatment because depending on how long they've had syphilis determines like the course of the treatment. It could be just one injection or it can be over the course of three weeks. And like, I don't know the exact, um, amount of time that it has to be administered before delivery, before you not see that detrimental impact. But like, that's what they're saying, like there's inadequate treatment, um, and there's not enough time from treatment to delivery or, um, they're seeing it at the time of delivery. But there is no way to test because they still have the mother's antibodies as well. So testing the mother is the way that we're monitoring this syphilis trend.
So really, the key to detection here is prenatal care. It's getting mothers in for adequate prenatal care to have that.
Absolutely.
Okay. When we talked about the suicide numbers and that by gun violence, it's our older white males. Are you, do y'all work with the veterans groups to get out with the, with our veteran's population?
We do, and specifically, so looking at, uh, I think one of the things we do well between the Mental Health Agency is try not to step on each other's toes and who's doing what. And so I'll ask Adrienne Michaeler because the Mental Health Agency does work on, specifically works with the, the Veterans Administration and that work. I'll ask Adrienne to, to touch on that a bit. But, um, yes, we, we discuss it and try to figure out what are the additional things that we can do and services that we can provide. There have been requests for more, um, veteran-specific services, and that sometimes can be a little challenging for us being outside of the VA system to navigate what are the veteran-specific services that we can provide. But I'll let Adrienne talk about what the Mental Health Agency is doing with it.
Thank you. And, um, together, um, with the Health Department, we both send a fair number of, of our staff to a monthly meeting of the, um, Anarundel County, Maryland Coalition for, uh, Anarundel County Coalitions for Suicide Prevention for Veterans, SMVF. I'm sorry, we have so many acronyms. And we specifically look at areas, um, that we can address for veterans suicide, working with, um, military and the services they offer. They have a comprehensive set of services that are specific for veterans. Also, our Network of Care, which is a website that is, um, a vast number of resources has a portal specifically for veterans services. So any way we can, we're partnering with, um, those organizations specifically for veterans.
Great, thank you. And one more question, this is a rabies question because I know y'all handle rabies, but you work closely with animal control on that. So if, uh, if someone, if there is a dead animal in somebody's yard.
Don't touch it.
Well, I know, don't touch it. Should they call the Health Department to concern to have that animal tested? Or should they call animal control?
Should call animal control specifically if the animal has not come into contact with a human. Uh, so if you've come into contact with a human or a pet, then you can give us a call. But it's animal control if you find a dead animal. We do have people, if you, I'm gonna say this because I know some residents watch. If you see an animal that looks hurt, if you see an animal that looks harmed, please leave it. Call animal control, don't handle it. We do often have people exposed because they think they're helping the animal, but then find themselves exposed to rabies. We really don't want that, but yes, animal control.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just another plug for the, um, recovery team, I know that you guys, for the outreach that you do in the community. I stay in touch with a lot of those members and they are certainly, um, super humans for some of the stuff that they do with going out into the woods or wherever they go to find folks who are, uh, in need. And then the second plug is for, or not necessarily a plug, but more of a statement. Rodents for Brooklyn Park, whatever additional dollars you need for that, you know, please sort of play it up because I will certainly support it and advocate for it. Uh, it's one of the, the continuous, um, um, the comments that I get from, from residents that live in Brooklyn Park, whether that's additional trash cans, which I know you guys don't necessarily have, but it is definitely on my top list of things to, uh, help with, uh, Brooklyn Park. So that's it.
Thank you. And yes, our AA Power team and our peers do fantastic work, um, in the harm reduction space. Thank you for acknowledging that.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Have you had any requests from, um, residents along Sands Road in regards to testing their wells? And if so, has anything come from that? Specifically, it's the private community wells that are not run by the residents themselves, but by the, kind of owners of the community, if that makes sense?
Yes, we have. And for specific details, I will refer to Don, but I've been included in a number of these conversations. And the issues there and their ability to do some of the things that most folks would like to do in their homes, right? Of, I want to expand this, I'd like to build that, uh, are really hinged on whether or not that system is working properly. And right now, as a health department, we cannot, um, actually certify that the system. And we know that they, the residents themselves don't own and operate it. But the ongoing, um, issues between the group that would actually monitor the well and the owners of the well have prevented us from being able to test it or to, to get the results from their testing to understand that it's working. So for us to be able to serve residents and say, yes, you can get a permit to do this, we need to know that the septic system is operating appropriately. And at this point, we don't have the documentation to say that that's happening because of that ongoing, um, issue between the folks who would monitor the septic system and those that own it right now. So that's what I am aware of.
That makes sense, and I appreciate that update. I'm actually, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. And my, my question was in specifics to, um, the, um, mobile home communities who I've heard from some constituents concerned about the quality of the water in the neighborhood well. And I just wasn't sure, I know that, that is actually overseen by MDE, but I didn't know if you had heard from folks there as.
That one I'm less familiar with. I'll ask Don Curtian to come up to see if he has more information specific to that.
Yeah, and, and I know, like I said, it's, it's technically under the umbrella of MDE, but I wasn't sure if folks had reached out to you guys or, um, yeah, exactly. Oh.
Hi, Don Curtian, Director of Environmental Health. So the mobile home parks, what's happening in the mobile home parks or what we've seen historically is not with the source water, with the well, it's the treatment. And the company that runs the treatment, which is regulated by MDE. MDE does test it on a ra, or they test it on a regular basis and it is monitored for compliance. They flush the system routinely because it has a lot of iron in it. So we get a lot of complaints sometimes about sediment and the discoloration of the water. But there's never been any exceedances for bacteria or any of the constituents on it. And as far as the private wells, um, we have tested a few times over the years, the private wells. Most recently in 2021, we were asked by the community of Long Sands Road to test the private wells. We reached out to the residents and only five allowed us to test the wells. We tested them, we tested for heavy metals and volatiles because there's an, an old landfill that's across the street from them as well as a rubble and, and sand and gravel old operation that's along there. No, we had no detections of any constituents of any concerns that were in the individual wells. But what happens is we have a lot of problems with people wanting us to come on their property and test the wells. I think they're afraid that we may condemn their home or their property, and that's not what we're there for. We're there to see, is there something to be concerned about that then we can address? We basically took a quarter-mile radius around that landfill and started with that group to see, is any migration coming off of that landfill? That's in the groundwater that would be concerned at the levels that those wells are? And the five that we tested had no constituents of, and no detections at all.
Wonderful, thank you for the information and for the hard work that clearly your department is doing and serving the constituents down there.
Yeah, and the other thing which I, with the mobile home parks that we're also looking at is, is, uh, I'm sure you saw that EPA gave them a $1.1 million fine for not operating their sewage treatment plants as well. And that's something that the county is looking at as well as working with MDE about some messaging about the, you know, the, the river down there because there's a park there that is used heavily by kayakers and fishermen, as well as, is it, is it something that the county will be looking at to take over operations of those plants? That brings in a lot of concerns, um, because, you know, right now, that's an area that does have some affordable housing, and it may change the whole nature of Sands Road if a sewage treatment plant gets developed in that area. So it's a very sensitive topic. If the company would just operate the plants properly and upgrade them because they're very old and need, they need a lot of investment in them. So there's lots of conversations that are happening with that at this point in time as well.
Thank you, thank you for leading my mind on my next question. I appreciate it. I have other questions, but I'm gonna defer to my colleagues so they can, you can come back to me.
Okay, Ms. Rodvien?
Thank you. Let's see, I have just a small handful. One of the questions that I've heard recently is with respect to the worm line. And what is the protocol for follow-up? So if a person makes, um, you know, a mental health call to the worm line, what, um, protocols happen after that call is over?
I'm gonna ask Jen Corbin to answer that question.
Good morning. So it depends on the type of call coming in. The first thing that we ask through the phone call is, do they want follow-up? Would they like us to check back in? Also, if they're referred out to one of the other parts of the system, it would be the responsibility of that part of the system. So if they did get or had been met with mobile crisis, the mobile crisis would be the one following up. So it really depends on how the call takes place and whether the person is interested in a follow-up call or not. It also depends on if they're asking us to connect them to services. A lot of times, we will give them that referral and then tell them that they can call back in, um, upon any problems that they have. Or would they like a call back in a day or so to see if they get connected to treatment?
Thank you, and, um, I just have a follow-up. So if a person said they were not interested in any sort of follow-up or connecting with any sort of resource, resources, they shouldn't expect to hear, there wouldn't be any follow-up?
Correct.
So it's voluntary with respect to a call to a worm line? Okay, thank you very much. That's, that's, answers the question I've got with respect to that. One of the things you've mentioned with regard to mental health is, um, the stigma that still surrounds, you know, reaching out for treatment. And I'm just wondering if you've seen the needle shift, especially in, um, you know, in the African-American community and the older white male community, where, you know, we've seen, uh, we've seen heavily impacted, um, groups. So I'm just curious if you feel like that's shifting at all? I know personally, like, working with children, young people, um, that has shifted dramatically, I feel like in the last, um, 10, 15, 20 years. But I'm curious if that's also extending to, um, older folks?
Yeah, that's a great question about older adults. And I don't know that I can speak specifically to that population to say whether or not we think that group, um, the stigma is changing. I think we're seeing more people talking about mental health openly and about the need for mental health resources and mental health challenges and that it's okay and everybody experiences, um, various things. So I think we are seeing a shift in the stigma in general. But to look at specific age groups, I can, we can look at, into that and see if we're seeing anything different around engagement or folks, you know, wanting to, um, be a part of it. One of the things that we are looking at is, um, we've talked to Aging and Disability about this, but how are providers, we do know that older adults are at providers' offices, medical appointments on a really regular basis. What are the screenings? What are the things happening for folks because they are, um, intervening with the medical system on a regular basis? But are we catching all of the things that we need to catch? And what could we be doing more of to make sure folks have the right resources?
Okay, thank you. And I was also just want to add, I was really pleased that you, um, were having programming related specifically to black mental health because I know that that, um, you know, has been an ongoing issue in probably communities all over the nation. One of the things that you mentioned, and this may be a question for Ms. Corbin, is that there's been a shortage in filling the positions in the crisis intervention teams. And I know that, you know, they're really embedded in the police department. But I'm curious, is, is it possible to, you know, combine, um, you know, department staff? Or is that, is it, does it? I understand that there, you know, maybe needs to have, um, like a certain number of sworn officers as part of that, a part of those teams, but I'm curious, is that, is it possible to have a mix? And would that actually help? I also see, you know, the, the job listings in the Department of Health, and I see that you have a considerable number of vacancies. So I don't know if you're, would be inclined to, you know, reach out that way, but I know that that. that way, but I know that that is a really valuable and important team. You know, the services are greatly appreciated and valued by the community at large.
So I'll take a shot at it, but I'll definitely invite Adrian and Jen to join me. They are embedded on-site with the Mental Health Agency, right? And with, so they're not at their police station, or they are a part of that team. Their desks are located, the officers are in one room, the other staff are right next door. And so their ability to collaborate and go out to calls and respond is really impressive. And so while they're not Mental Health Agency employees, they are really embedded in the Mental Health Agency as is now. I don't know if there's any ability to embed them further than that, or really, because they do still need to hold all of the authority that they hold as an officer in order for it to work. But I would ask Adrian and Jen if they have anything they'd like to add to that.
Good job.
And so it is needed to have, like, every member of the team be, you know, be a sworn officer?
So I think there's- Some confusion. So when we're talking about CIT, we're talking about the eight officers that are assigned to work paired with a licensed clinician through crisis response. There are 200 and something officers trained in CIT out in patrol, but that can respond to calls on a timely basis. Right now, the police department has chosen to kind of cut that in half and put, not fill positions as they go out. So we're using our patrol officers more to pair up with our CIT clinicians, because it's hard to do seven days a week with four officers. So when we had eight. So with patrol shortages, the chief has made the decision to put, and not fill as that has gone on, we will be using patrol. The difference is, it's great. I'm really proud of all the people we train, but there's a stigma to this and a community policing model. So where my concerns come in is, we just saw, we're trying to build trust back in the community, and a lot of that doesn't come with a marked car and a uniform, even if the officer is really good at what they do. But what we do now is we run as a pair with a softer uniform, unmarked car. Most people who are working with us are asking us to come to them because they know what they're getting. When you start adding it as a patrol officer coming in, one, you're shortening patrol for several hours, because now that shortage that you just put into patrol is now being pulled from patrol to do the call for service. So we're still in the same boat. But then you deal with the stigmatizing piece of people not wanting us to dispatch out to their home now, because I don't want that police car in my driveway. I do not want the uniformed officer at my home. There's a stigma piece that we work really hard at. So I think the confusion comes in, we had eight officers signed that came to crisis for their shifts in special uniform, unmarked cars to do stable visits. That now is going down, is going to go down next month. It was five officers, but as people are retiring out and leaving the police department due to what's going on, we will be left with four starting June 1, when we had eight at the beginning of the year. So we will be adjusting how we do things moving forward in regards to that. But we can use patrol, and the chief has given us permission to do overtime. But again, when an overtime officer comes to work, they are still going to be in a marked car. They'll be in a uniform that does not look like the normal CIT uniform. It'll be their black golf shirt instead of the uniform that we wear daily. So there is that piece to it. I hope that answers your question a little bit.
I think so. So, but just to 100% clarify, there does need to be one sworn officer as part of the team?
To do, yes. If we're running the CIT model, we have other models within our department, but to do CIT, it would have to be a sworn officer, because there's a lot of questions on reporting, pulling reports and that stuff if we're out on a follow-up call.
Okay. I appreciate that. Yep, that's what I needed to, that's what I needed. Well, you gave a lot of really excellent information, so I appreciate that. Yep, thank you. Thank you.
The only other thing I would like to add about the CIT teams is, yes, it definitely has to be a sworn officer, because those are calls that the original, like, our original model was our mobile crisis teams, which is an independently licensed clinician and a master's level clinician. They are not able to go on some calls by themselves just because of the dangerousness factors. So we definitely need the CIT teams out there as part of our crisis system.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like a be well magnet, please. Maybe two. If we could talk a little bit about the education piece to mental health. I know we talk a lot about reducing the stigma and folks feeling comfortable reaching out if they need services. Is there a component to it to educate the broader public on identifying red flags in those around them?
Yes, absolutely. I think a lot of the things that we, so there have been anti-stigma campaigns, but also looking at, what do you need to know, right, if you think someone needs help? And I think that's where a lot of, what we're doing around mental health first aid, right, thinking of it similar to like a first aid for a cut. When do you need to go to the hospital? Is it deep enough? What can you do right here? And so getting people to understand what are symptoms of and things that you might see in someone experiencing mental health crisis, or just, you know, elevating mental health concerns. And so the more that we can do to put that out, and that's one of the things that we want to do with the Community Health Ambassadors, is say, okay, go out and do these trainings, help people understand what it looks like. But also, within the Behavioral Health Bureau, various campaigns and education and things are done to make sure that we're sharing as much as we can with folks on what to look out for.
May I ask, does that education extend into the schools, or is there a component that reaches our youth?
So we do have programs. We have an adolescent and family program. And so there are things that we do specifically for youth. We do not, to my knowledge, I don't believe, we do have a specific campaign or something that we're doing in partnership with schools to educate. I know that we work very closely with Ryan Boglin and others on the work that they do within the school systems around this, so that work is happening. It's just not necessarily work that we are doing as the health department. The school health, we do have a STAR program, so if a child does have issues and they need to talk to someone, we have the ability in middle schools and high schools to get telehealth appointments going for those children in real time. But the education piece, I don't know if we're doing, we are doing that within the school systems.
Okay. And I really do appreciate that, and this is kind of segueing into a follow-up. So we had Dr. Vadel here yesterday to talk about the school system budget. We got on the topic of cell phones and the mental health impacts on teens specifically. I know the Department of Health does a lot of education for a variety of items, knowing how closely linked cell phones and social media are to the mental health of our teens, knowing that the teen numbers and acuity is increasing. Have you all ever discussed an education piece on cell phones and developing brains and social media?
We have. And I'll ask Sandy O'Neill to see if there's anything specifically that we're doing within AFS for the children, Adolescent and Family Services, for the children that we're serving in that program. I don't know that we've done any broad campaigns, but I don't remember every campaign we've done. So I'll-
Understood.
Good morning. Sandy O'Neill, Director of Behavioral Health. We have had a lot of conversations regarding that and what that messaging would be, because there's some, there's very clear research showing the problems that it causes, but there's also some research regarding the connection that children have through their phones. So getting the right messaging out there is something that we're absolutely discussing. Our Adolescent and Family Group has done some very specific messaging and education for the families that they serve, and they've got a little corner set up in one of their waiting rooms to have those kinds of conversations. And that piece of having those conversations is probably where our messaging is going to take us.
I appreciate that. I just, you know, I think there's such a need, because we hear it all of the time, but we also see kids walking around like this, and they're in those social media apps, and it does have a profound effect. And I don't think we can beat that drum enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Fiedler, for that question, because I was going to ask something similar. I think Ms. Ledbetter might have too. With that, I wanted
to follow up. Ms. O'Neill, you just left, but I think my question's going to be for you. Sorry about that. So we spent a lot of time last year, as many people in the council may remember, talking about group homes, recovery residences, and some of the requirements around them in the county versus the state and the interplay between them. Is there any update on where the state stands in terms of regulation? And has there been any movement on that? And then, and I'm going to say this, I know there has, right, and you do too. So to the extent that there has, is there any need then for the county to do anything from a behavioral health standpoint, from a recovery residence, group home standpoint, all of that, for us to be able to be in compliance, county code, with what the state is now moving to do?
That's a big question.
You say big?
Yes.
And if you have to get back to me, that's okay.
Some of that I will have to get back to you. I will say that the state has a, there's a new administration, and they are taking a close look at a lot of the regulations. The county does not regulate that, so we don't have any, any kind of say in that. We are participating with the state, most recently, to do an outcome, to find the outcome measures that we want to use statewide. So we're going to be working with them to develop that. But beyond that, and what the new 1063, which are the regulations governing behavioral health, will say, we haven't seen those yet.
Okay. If you can get me any more information on that, I appreciate it.
Sure.
May I ask another follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. With respect to the Fourth Circuit's decision, thank you for the update on that, on the suicide literature, because I read, actually read that based on your, I wasn't following that case, but you pointed it out, and so I actually went and read the opinion. It was validating for those of us who voted on that. With the way that you're moving and sort of putting resources into the gun violence intervention, and also the suicide prevention and awareness, do you have a sense of what you're spending in terms of the cost for that? And I know I'm sort of blurring the lines between your presentation and where we get with budget, but do you know what that is costing? I know the suicide prevention piece with the literature was relatively inexpensive. That was one of the things we discussed when we did that program. But in terms of some of the outreach that you're making and the programs that you've got moving in the gun violence intervention teams, the, well, the task force and then the recommendations, what is that costing? How is it being funded? Is it being funded out of general funds? Is it grant funding? And if you tell me to wait until your next part, I will, but that's my question.
No, I can, I can touch on that now. So it's a combination. So we have a number of grants from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Control, and that's one source of funding. So the staff internally, there are only two staff members, that this is their full-time job, and one of them literally started last week. So prior to that, it had been one individual, and that was open for quite some time. So it's a number of us, who, myself, Donna, Peggy, Megan, there's a whole group of us that kind of moved this work forward, Bella. And so there's not a lot of resources inside of the Health Department. The GVIT is an inter-agency group, and so all of those members come from various departments, and it's a part of their work and their job to be on those committees. So it's not an additional cost, but there are two staff members in the Health Department. And then the Violence Interruption Program itself, including the one staff member to make sure that we're providing appropriate oversight, is roughly around $700,000, and that right now has been funded through American Rescue dollars. It has been, and you'll see in my budget presentation, added to general funds moving forward as a part of the budget, proposed budget. And then other costs associated, things like gun locks and many of the other things that we do, there's other grants that we have as well, like the violent, the Youth Violence Prevention Grant and the planning. That came from a different organization. So we spend a lot of time looking for grant dollars and ways to fund this. We're excited that the state, and that's one of the things that I testified on this year, is having a gun violence department, for lack of a better term, within the State Health Department. So hopefully, they did cut that budget for that department down quite a bit, but it did pass. We hope in the future, there will be additional funds coming from the state to help support some of this work, but that's really where we are right now. And then the cost for suicide literature and the work there, unfortunately, there was no funding associated with that. So while it is small, it has taken Sandy and her team a lot of legwork, so to go out and do those visits, and so we could quantify the amount of hours and time. And it, I think in the future, it is something we're going to have to look for funding to continue to support, especially as we really routinize those compliance visits. It's one thing to drop off a box of pamphlets. It's another thing to engage and educate and make sure that retailers are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And so we will continue to look at exactly what that's costing.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a comment and two unrelated questions. First off, my comment is, when you and your team get your messaging and about the cell phones and the social media, please let me know how I can help be a partner in spreading that message. I think it's a very important one, and would love to work with you guys on that. My question is specifically about the school health and the telehealth visits. I'm assuming parental consent is probably involved somewhere in that process before that visit takes place. I just want to make sure the public understands that.
Yes, it is. So we had a meeting held at the school, so parents come and ask questions and understand the process, but the consent forms went home with students if you wanted to participate. So if you weren't at that meeting and you wanted your child to be able to participate in this program, it does require a consent form prior to.
And then if the program were to expand into the future, is there an age at which a, I'm going to use the word child, but maybe legally, I'm not using the right word, but is there an age at which consent is no longer required for a minor to see a doctor without their parent being notified, even in a school telehealth type environment? Are you aware?
There is. And this is something, because we don't have school-based health centers in Anarundel County at this time, it's not something that I'm super familiar with, but I can get you that answer to tell you exactly what. But there is an age for minors.
Right. And I know we're not there at this point in time. I'm just trying to make sure I understand so I can answer questions effectively and accurately.
Absolutely. And we are looking at school-based health centers and whether or not that's something we should be doing. And we've applied for a grant to have some planning around what that looks like. So partnering with AACPS to, because we do think having more access in schools will be good for children and provide additional access for families. And that's one of the questions that we'll have to tackle as we go through that process of, what is the age of consent? What do parents know? And how do we figure that out? But then also, how do you make sure you're providing the care that the child needs and understanding the privacy of the child as well?
Perfect. Thank you. And one more question, Madam Chair, if I may. When it, what is the ability of, and this is completely unrelated, shifting gears, what is the ability of the Department of Health, when you, I'll use rodents for an example. There, let's say there's a complaint about rodents somewhere, police or who shows up to inspect, what is the ability of the Department of Health to use any body cam footage as evidence that there is, in fact, a health violation? Is there, do you have that ability at all? Does, does it, what would it take if you need that ability? And if you need to get back to me, I understand.
I will have to get back to you on that one, because I don't know the regulations around video versus an inspector has witnessed something, and what does that mean? And I definitely don't know the laws around the body cams and what we're able to access and not. So that's something I'd have to get back to you on.
Okay, thank you. I very much appreciate it. And thanks for a wonderful presentation today. All your hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodvien?
Oh, were you next? No. Do, yeah, thank you. I wanted to follow up on something Ms. Ledbetter was asking about. I just wanted to comment that, again, as I feel like I have lots of things to add from my teacher perspective here, when a young person doesn't necessarily have access to, you know, a mental health professional, and, you know, for whatever reason, perhaps they, you know, don't want to ask for consent from a parent, they will instead come to a teacher or another trusted adult. And so I think it's really valuable to keep in mind that the consent conversation actually may block them from getting access to a mental health professional, and rather than someone who, you know, I mean, we get sort of nominal training in how to deal with mental health, but a kid's going to look for help one way or the other if they need it. And so the idea that, I just wanted to share that thought with respect to consent.
Thank you. And we'll definitely get back to you all and make sure that our answer covers both mental health and physical health, and if there's any differences there.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I did want to thank everybody for coming out today. I actually talk more with environmental health than I think anybody else. But I wanted to touch on one thing that's popped up recently. We've talked a lot about fentanyl, but you mentioned xylazine. And there's one other new drug on the, out there, I think it starts with a P, but they're both extremely deadly, if not more so than fentanyl. deadly, if not more so than fentanyl. Can you touch on those two and information?
Sure. So xylazine is actually, it's a tranquilizer for large animals. And so it's not a medication that's intended for human consumption, but what happens is that it can make a high last a little longer, be slightly more potent. And so you'll see, we want to make sure people are testing for that, because it can potentially lead to a more, maybe increase your chances of overdosing. But also, when you're seeing someone with those effects, they may appear to be in a very heavy sleep that you can't arouse them from again, because it is meant for large animals. And so that's what xylazine is. It doesn't, using it would not make an individual high. It's not something that's sold by itself, to my knowledge, but it is sometimes added to substances to increase the high, or to, not to increase the high, but to prolong it, and then to add, you know, tranquilizer effects. And so that's what we're seeing with xylazine. So the test strips will allow for individuals to know if that is in the substance.
Does Narcan work against xylazine?
It's not an opioid. So Narcan specifically works on opioids, but what we have seen is because most folks don't actually know all of what may be and what they're using, we encourage, no matter what you think you may have just taken, if someone appears to be overdosing, that they try the Narcan and see if it works. But if you have not taken an opioid, you will not necessarily respond to Narcan. But it's because we see opioids in so many different substances, we are encouraging it.
Understood. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I think we have finished out our questions for now. As the, thank you so much for bringing your entire team and your amazing presentation and the work that you do. At this time, is there any other business to be brought before the Board of Health? May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. The Anarundel County Board of Health is adjourned until October. We're going to take about a five-minute recess and come back, and I'll call to order our budget presentations. And we'll start again with the Board of Health. Board of Health, we do it twice a year. Good morning again. The May 14, 2024 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all electronic devices remain in silent mode. We will continue this morning with department budget presentations, and we'll begin where we left off with the Health Department. So welcome again, Dr. Geddes. You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm actually going to turn it over to Sam to get us started.
Hi, my name is Sam Chariaco. I'm with the Budget Office, and I just wanted to direct you guys to page 249, which is where the Health Department starts in the proposed budget book.
Okay, because you haven't heard enough from me today, we're going to get into our budget. So for FY '25, our total request is 93.1 million, and that is an increase of 13.2% over the FY '24 budget. 63% of the proposed budget is county funds, and 37% is grants, and that grant also includes state support through core funds. And then this increase, we really see the end of the American Rescue dollars and what that means for things that had been funded for the Health Department and programs that were created through COVID. And we will talk about those briefly, and you've heard a lot about them in my previous presentation, so I will make it short. And then things that we need to support our current infrastructure and to bolster the programs, and things that we've really created that we think are enhancing the health of the county. And so that's what we're looking at. So I will start with school health, because during our last budget meeting, this was something that came up from the council, and I'd like to thank the Budget Office for the time that they spent working with the Health Department over the summer and late last year, to really dive into what our school health employees were looking for in a benefits and salary package. And so there are new schools opening, and so we're asking for funding to provide the health support in the health rooms. And then additionally, private duty nurses, and so these are children who require one-on-one nursing support. And there are, we, a rough guess, around 11 children that will be needing additional private duty nurses this year, and some of that has changed as a result of the state. Some of these children have been supported by nurses that were coming in, maybe a nurse that you have with you at home that was coming into school with you as well. And the state does offset the cost of that for special education needs. And so the decision's been made to make sure that the funds that are already being provided for special education students are being used to support this. And so we have to look at general funds to support having additional students, because in Anarundel County, the Health Department oversees that staff and not the school system. And then school health staff benefits. So we're really looking at increasing the benefit package, both via salary and a 401A contribution and ability for these staff. So instead of making these staff full-merit employees, I think we've come up with something that is very comparable and, and close. And so this $1.62 million is looking at increasing their salaries, which keeps us competitive with other large counties around us, which is where we often see our staff going. But also, it addresses the concerns that we've heard from staff around, long-term staff, who say, I'd really like some retirement benefits. And that's one of the, one of the reasons that they consider leaving our program or do leave our program. And so we really hope that these changes will assist us with increasing our retention and hopefully lowering our turnover rate that we looked at earlier, but we will keep you posted. And so that's what's proposed for school health this year. And again, big thank you to the Budget Office, because this was not an easy task to come up with these proposals, and to figure out what we could do to try to increase the satisfaction of these staff members who provide really critical services to children every day. Our Healthy Communities Program, which I talked about during the Board of Health presentation, really looks at the combination of our existing structures around our health centers and immunization programs, combining it with the staff who were formerly COVID operations, staff members, a much smaller group of that staff, but it's still, for those 12 individuals, this funding really helps us to keep those health centers open five days a week, each of them operating, and also continuing to provide the mobile services that we created during the pandemic that we found have been really, really crucial to serving vulnerable populations. So your homebound individuals, people experiencing homelessness, older adults coming out to schools. This is really the last of what's been created to respond from a vaccination and testing standpoint from COVID, and this is the amount of money that we would need to keep this program operating and not go back to two days a week at each health center, and not being able to offer things like homebound vaccinations to residents. Our Community Health Ambassador Program is roughly $720,000 to fund seven different organizations, and around 30, between 25 and 30 individuals in that, that are enrolls of Community Health Ambassador. As we discussed, this program really allows us to get into communities with faces and people and organizations that folks are familiar with, that look like them, that maybe in certain cases speak the language that they speak, and can provide information in culturally appropriate ways. And so we're really, we're really excited about the things that we've been able to add on to their plate, while this was created out of need for vaccine uptick and seeing, responding to disparities in vaccine upticks and, and COVID. We think that this should continue, because we've been able to use them for things like mental health first aid and naloxone training and weather preparedness. And so they really are kind of a Swiss Army knife of tools. It depends on what we're able to train them on and what we're seeing. And so every year, we're able to decide, maybe we don't need to cover this this year, and we'll add something new to the docket, but they've been a really important staple, and those seven organizations are absolutely fantastic. Violence Interruption Program, Mr. Volkey started this question a little bit on what is it costing? And so this $582,000 includes about a little over 450 awarded to Kingdom Care to actually operate the program. But then there are also additional costs for the database that I mentioned through Cure Violence and technical assistance. So every two weeks, we meet with Cure Violence Global and Kingdom Care to sit down and talk about what are the issues that we're seeing, how are things working? And so it provides that ongoing technical assistance and training as well. And then I also mentioned this during the Board of Health presentation, but the JDN Food Software Program, so allowing our environmental health staff who are inspecting restaurants to really fully use technology in a way that enhances their work, but also hopefully makes it more efficient, so that they're not taking notes and then going back to the office to fill it out, that they can actually put it all in the tablet that they have while they're in the restaurant and move it forward. As well as allowing people to pay for their licenses online, which has been a huge request. Other items for our budget, the Parole Health Center. And so while this previously had not been a rent that we had for the Health Department, we were, the Lay Health Association for the Parole Health Center had allowed us to be in the space, because they know that it's important for the services to be there, and we felt it was important to continue health services at that historic location. The building is old, and it would often have needs for repairs. And so we would often end up in conversations around who's covering what. And as a tenant, typically it's the landlord, but the Lay Health Association only has so much money to actually do things like improve an elevator or change steps. And so we agreed two or three years ago, I can't remember right now, to pay rent, and this had been coming out of American Rescue dollars, and now we need it added to general funds to make sure that we can maintain, this is both rent and caring costs for that location. A refresh of our equipment. So IT equipment in the Health Department, like most other places, we replace equipment about every five years. So this one is just an update for our equipment. A contractual billing position, we think there is some ability to optimize the billing that we do to health insurance. And so we want to make sure that we're making all efforts to really collect anything possible. And we think having a contractual billing position, and it actually would most likely start as a consultant to come in and look at our billing processes and see what else the Health Department can be doing around billing. And then I'm going to switch into some things that will be opioid abatement funds. So our Road to Recovery narcotic treatment program, this is a mobile, mobile program. So this is a smaller WellMobile that is specifically for detention centers, and making sure that we are able to provide all forms of medication-assisted treatment to meet the legislative requirements to folks who are incarcerated. And so this cost allows us to continue to do that, and hoping to have it funded out of opioid abatement funds. Peer Support Specialists, we talked about some of the work in the Harm Reduction Coordinator, some of the work that these individuals do in our community around supporting overdose survivors, providing harm reduction materials. Again, these individuals would be funded out of opioid abatement funds. And then the Mental Health Agency. We spoke about the crisis services and the need for the increased funding to continue what's been happening. There was funding provided through ARPA funds, and so now that we are not there, and the numbers continue to be higher than they were pre-pandemic, the cost still remains. And so the Mental Health Agency is proposing $603,000 out of general funds. Arundel Lodge, which we all know is our walk-in center and does really fantastic work to make sure that they're able to respond when people need something and, and connect them to services, and keep them engaged while they're waiting to connect them to services, needed some funding this year to keep their doors open. And so the county executive, along with the Mental Health Agency and the Health Department, did a lot of work to get a proposal together, and also asked the state to match these funds to help keep them open, because we know that this is important. And so that is that request. And then Juul Restitution Funds. This one is new, so this would be the first year that we've received these funds. And it is specifically looking at electronic devices for smoking, but it can be either cannabis or nicotine. And so we're looking to engage the Truth Initiative, which is a texting program for youth who want to quit smoking or vaping. We also want to do some campaigns, as we spoke about, around the dangers of vaping cannabis. Those would both be Juul restitution funded. And then a coordinator of special programs. We don't have any staff specifically focused on these areas at the moment. And so having a community health worker and a coordinator to do this work, as well as educational materials that you'll see listed below, for supplies and for media around safe storage and campaigns that we would like to run. And these, we all are in the budget proposed to be Juul restitution funds. And then lastly, our capital budget request. These have not changed much, our septic system enhancements, our failed sewage in private well, as well as the demo codes. So when, when buildings are being demolished to make sure it's done safely, these are the consistent capital requests that we've had, and they continue. That's the end for me.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What percentage of the funds that you're seeking from the county this year are general funds to replace ARPA funds, or the COVID dollars that you had received? What's that figure?
Yeah, I don't know the exact percentage, but I can tell you the programs specifically. So the Violence Interruption Program, the Community Health Ambassador Program, the Healthy Communities Program were all previously funded through ARPA dollars. So this is a continuation of work that we have started. And then the Parole Health Center rent as well. So everything else is not a switch from ARPA funding to, like, we can get that figure for you, the exact percentage, but those are the programs.
Okay, thank you. And so with those programs, just that I make sure I'm clear, those programs did not exist prior to COVID. And then they were something that you stood up during COVID using the American Rescue or the CARES money. You put those programs into place, and now you're seeking to continue them?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the position pages, you have essentially a net zero because of, it looks like maybe some reclassification. Can you speak to that?
I'd have to look at it specifically. Yeah, I don't think we, other, sure, I'm just asking. Yeah, I guess, is your question, do we, are we not requesting new positions, or is that the, yeah, so other than the schools and the private duty nurses, there really are no new positions in here. These are continuing positions. So as we just talked about, these three programs, some of which are not even Health Department staff, right? So we fund with the Community Health Ambassadors and the Violence Interruption Program. There's one staff member with the Violence Interruption, but the others are dollars that we work through community organizations to do. And I don't believe there should be any additional positions that are not related to opioid abatement. And then the billing position, and whether or not that's going to actually be a person or a consultant coming in to help us initially to determine whether we need a person or two people. I don't want to assume what we need without some, some work there, but...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So I'm looking specifically in the budget book, page 256. That's the School Health and Support Program, and that's the increase of 5.59 million. When I look at the slide in your presentation, that was slide three, it looks like you were asking for $484,000 for the new high school, 521 for the 11 private duty nurses, and then 1.6 million for the school health staff, which is roughly 2.6 million of that 5.6 million. What's the other 3 million going to in there? What is that including?
Sure. So what we found last year, and we've worked with the Budget Office really closely over the last year, because when we were...
the last year, because when we were projecting figures for this year, it was the Health Department thought it would cost a little bit more to run the program with what we've seen with turnover, the way the Budget Office runs their numbers, we had a slight discrepancy in what each group thought. So we've been meeting quarterly to say, okay, where are we, where are we with projections? And so the cost of the program and some of that turnover, substitutes, training, that's really what that, so it's not additional people, they're positions that have already existed. But last year, some of that, because we had so many vacancies and that the Budget Office did what they need to do and make sure that they cut things appropriately. And so, but this year, we found that, okay, we actually did need all of this. And so I'll leave it to Sam or Grace if there's anything else they'd like to add to that.
Okay.
But that's what that.
I just wanted to add that you'll see when we bring the fourth quarter appropriation bill in front of you, that they're asking for about $3 million in this fiscal year to cover the shortage of the school health nurses' budget. So we also lowered turnover as well to right-size this number in the fiscal year '25 budget.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up? Thank you. I don't know where it was. I had a question, but I lost it. But I did have another one on your capital request. So the demo code, the demo building code, 150,000, I have, in my district, had some buildings that you all, through IMP and DPW and everybody, I believe, have used this fund to do some demo. So is that a sufficient amount of money? And is the failed sewage and private well fund a sufficient amount of money? Because we've also had constituents in our district who've reached out, and they've, you know, everybody in health is very kind and they're helpful. I'm not trying to say otherwise. But they say, look, we've exhausted the money, or we don't have any more resources this year, the program is exhausted. So I guess, just looking at these, I recognize they're consistent with the program, but is that enough money? Is that what you actually need?
I think for the demo code, yes, I think we're right where we need to be. Failed sewage is a little bit harder to guess sometimes, from what we know historically, but you can always have a year where you have more systems fail that you weren't planning for. And so that one is a bit of a moving target, but I think we should be okay. But I will get back to you on that, just to double-check with my environmental health staff.
Yeah, thank you.
But I think we're pretty consistent there.
Okay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up, very good timing, thank you. Mr. Volkey's question, and include the septic system enhancements as part of the question, whether or not you feel that the funding is where you need it to be?
Yeah, we think so. We think this one, for the most part, hits the mark pretty well, but I'll double-check that just to be sure.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. And thank you for asking the other question, Mr. Volkey.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to the 3 million that we will see shortly, I would assume that that comes into play in the difference between the original FY '24 and the estimate for FY '24? Okay.
Mr. Volkey.
I remember my question now, thank you.
Oh, good, okay.
So Madam Auditor's Office, again, kudos to them on this wonderful reviews that they have prepared. But on the review that we received, it looks like the budget to actual in terms of expenses that's been through the Health Department the last few years, the budgeted amount is, at least from the chart I'm looking at on Page 3, significantly higher than what the actual expenses have been. Do you all have a copy of what the auditor put together? Do you have that? Okay. So can you speak to that and why sort of there's that difference between what the Auditor's Office is seeing as budget to actual in those figures, and then how that corresponds to what you mentioned about needing to come in and right-size the school health budget at 3 million?
Yeah.
I think you know where I'm going, so.
Absolutely. There's definitely, and school health is just one of our bureaus, but we definitely have had a harder time over the last several years in hiring, right? So one great example is actually my deputy health officer here, Dr. Bada. When you looked that position until I was officially in the role as health officer, we couldn't recruit for that position. And so while I left technically my position last year in March, she came on this year in February. And so that salary, it's, we need it, we were trying to hire it, but then you look at what we're actually spending versus what's budgeted, and because the Health Department funding is almost, when you look at what it is, mostly staffing, right? It's not a lot of additional cost outside of that. It is our staffing. And so we have positions that we've struggled to hire, but are definitely needed. We've been trying to hire bilingual therapists and adolescent and family services for over two years, but it's not a position that I'm willing to take off of the table because we need it, and we have a list of families that need it. And so those are the types of things, and we never really know, a number of positions are posted all the time. But I think that is the biggest difference between what we're actually spending and then what we're seeing there is vacancies.
Okay, so it's vacancies, basically, is the fact you're budgeting for positions that we're funding, but that you've not yet been able to fill. Got it.
Can I add to that, Tony? I also wanted to say their core grant funding from the state, I think significantly decreased from previous years, which is their main state funding that they have as well, so that factors in, because they're not able to charge some of the cost to the grants that they normally would.
Where is that in the budget book, so I can look at that?
It's going to be under the grant fund, it's kind of mixed in between all the bureaus, so it's kind of hard to tell, but I can get you past information.
On 250, it looks like they were 35 million in FY '23, and now they're under 30 million in FY '25. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. One more thing I wanted to mention, sorry. Also, their state, we don't always know ahead of time in the Budget Office what their state pay packages are going to be, so sometimes that comes in later. So we try to estimate that as best as we can and try to also base it on what the county is giving, but the state ends up giving more. We don't always have, you know, funding for that, so we have to make up for that in the next fiscal year as well, so that's a factor.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the program about the health dangers for youth vaping, I see it's currently funded by the Jewel Restitution Funds. Is there a timeline for how long we expect that fund to exist? And is there a plan in place for what, what do you have in mind for what may happen when those funds are no longer available?
A couple of different things. I think, one, there is cannabis funding that will be coming from a state perspective, how much of it will be available to us, and how much of it will be competitive grants, I don't know. But this is something that we're looking at. The timeline, and what's funny is when I started presenting, that number went out of my head, for the Jewel Restitution Funds, but I will get that answer to you for how long this lasts, because that's always a question for us, how much do we stand up, particularly around positions, when you hire people.
Right.
It is a thing that we do on a regular basis, because we often have grants that last for two, three, four years, and we tell people when they come in, the length of that program, and then we would look at making supplemental requests to the County Executive's Office if we think the program's been successful and needs to continue, and we don't have other funding sources. But we can also look at our core funding from the state to see if there's any ability to supplement some of it. So there's a number of different ways that we look at how to fund programs that need to continue after their funding sources have expired. And so this would be another one that we'd have to keep our eyes on and.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
And what, just curious, what metrics you would use to determine whether or not the program is a success? Anything come to mind?
Yeah, there's a few different things. I think, one, when you look at surveying youth to understand who's doing what, and whether or not that goes up or down, right? Do we actually get children to participate in the TRUTH Initiative? Are they going to sign up? Are they actively engaging? If so, how much, how many of them said that they quit as a result or decreased the amount of smoking that they were engaging in? And then looking at things like community health workers and outreach workers, we often have a lot of process measures, and I'd like to get us to a place with more outcome measures, but that can be tricky when you go to do community engagement, right? What we can measure that day is how many people came and how satisfied they were with the education. It can be a little more challenging to measure what happened to those individuals when they leave, but these are the types of things that we'd like to get out. And then for things like safe storage, I would think of it very similar to gun locks, how many are we able to give out, what is the interest of the community, are families taking us up on it? And are we seeing a decrease in exposures to cannabis for young children? And that's what we would be measuring, so looking at hospitalizations and those sorts of things.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. The Arundel Lodge funding, the 200,000, is that a one-time fund infusion, or is that an ongoing fund infusion?
That is a one-time fund.
Okay, so we do not anticipate that this is any kind of a structural issue for Arundel Lodge, where they're going to be seeking this funding again in the future?
One of the things that the County Executive's Office and the State Behavioral Health Administration really asked us to do was to look at their plans for billing, look at their current financials to create a plan with them, and so working really closely with Arundel Lodge to keep our eyes on that and to make sure that they're doing things like billing to their maximum capacity, making sure that they are cutting back where they can. And so, yes, that has been the expectation, that's been relayed. I can't necessarily tell you for sure what will happen in the future, but there was a lot of thought put into and plans that needed to be put in place before the funding was even discussed, and to make sure that we're wisely using these dollars and hopefully keeping them afloat, but not keeping them afloat for, in perpetuity.
Good. So the follow-up to that would be the discussions that you referenced and the sort of messaging that this is a one-time infusion, please don't look at this as an ongoing source of funding. Has that been included in some sort of memorandum of understanding or agreement or something like that? What's the actual mechanism by which you have advised them, this is what we expect from you?
Sure, so there's been several different ways, and some of that has also, as I mentioned, we asked the state to match these funds, so that messaging has also come from the Behavioral Health Administration. But it is a, it'll essentially, I believe, be a grant agreement between the Mental Health Agency going out to them, and that is aligned in those agreements. When you say you're receiving this fund, this is a one-time fund, but we have had those conversations through meetings, we've also had that conversation via email, just to make sure as we're getting the plans back, why this information is necessary.
Okay.
And what we need from them, and we have their plans and all of the proposals.
Good, thank you.
It appears we have exhausted all questions about the Health Department budget, so thank you very much for your time this morning. And we will move along to our next group, who I believe is the Department of Aging. We'll let you guys introduce yourselves. Thank you for being here this morning, and you have the floor, the Department of Aging.
228 of the budget book. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Director.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Honored Members of Council. For the record, I'm Carissa Kelly, Director of the Department of Aging and Disabilities. With me today, I have Joelle Ridgway, Deputy Director, and Wendy Carisquillo, Management Assistant for the Department. I'm thankful in advance for your support of our budget so we can continue to do the great work at the Department of Aging and Disabilities. As you know, the Department of Aging and Disabilities provides services to older adults, individuals with disabilities, caregivers, veterans, and really anyone interested in planning for their future. We do so through the operation of 25 programs in 23 locations throughout the county, ranging from resource coordination, Medicare counseling, case management, hospital and 911 diversion programs. We operate 22 nutrition sites throughout the county and eight senior activity centers, with a senior center network just one of the 25 programs. In FY '24, the Department of Aging and Disabilities continued to strive beyond our existing services to expand the depth of our reach into the community. Our departmental motto is "Making Life Better," and in 2023, we know that we made the impact in the lives of over 16,000 residents. In the past year, we provided 433,000 units of service to the residents of Anarundel County. Key FY '24 highlighted accomplishments, the department addressed critical needs for our population, including mental health disparities, that we began and initiated a pilot mental health initiative, addressing equity through resource navigation, addressing crucial gaps of food, housing, utility insecurities through grant funding, and developed unique community models of programming, such as the opening of the Severance Center. We thank the Administration and County Council for the FY '24 commitment to veterans and their families through memorializing a position within county government to lead the Veteran Services Coordination Center, which has been a huge success. In FY '24, we received and answered 1,183 calls for services from veterans within our county. We're excited for the opportunity to continue this critical service through the Department of Aging and Disabilities. In terms of future, the Department of Aging and Disabilities continues to push the mission of the department into every aspect of the community. With the support and vision of the new Secretary for the State Department of Aging, we hope to make Anarundel County a longevity-ready community, ensuring that services and physical structures are inclusive and receptive to the needs of older adults. Transportation continues to be a need for older adults in our county and people with disabilities. With the Office of Transportation Support, we are rebranding one of our voucher programs to diversify and expand transportation options for older adults and individuals with disabilities. We look forward to the position increase within our senior center activity network. All senior centers are highly visible community assets, and membership has only grown since the pandemic to 200 to 300 daily visitors at each center supervised with one director and one office support. The Severance Center is a unique model of this, opens seven days a week, 12 hours a day, to both older adults and community members of all ages. The increase in support will continue its growth and our safety of operations at that location. Finally, we thank the Administration and County Council for the investment in the Arnold Senior Activity Center expansion and renovation. It's currently in the design phase, and we look forward to construction in FY '25. This project has made it possible to grow and diversify our services that improve the quality of life for the older adults in that area. In conclusion, I am proud to serve the community, and I look forward to the work we have ahead of us, as we offer continued innovative ways to serve the older adults, individuals with disabilities, caregivers, and veterans within our county. And I thank everyone, and I can take any questions at this time.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. First off, I want to start with a comment, which is a compliment. You, your department has been an amazing partner, as, you know, my office has worked to serve constituents, and not only have we had a wonderful experience from my office, but I hear from constituents personally who have complimented your team, your staff, and the work that you do. So I just wanted you to first hear that. And then the second part is a question, if you could just elaborate on the services that you've been able to provide to veterans, a little bit more detail, what, do those services fall into specific categories? Is there something that stands out as the top hit, the greatest need? Any information you'd be willing to share?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your compliment, I will share that with my team. As far as the Veteran Services Coordination Center, we have been taking metrics for a little over a year. Something unique is that 80% of the veteran calls that we receive are age 60 and older, so it's very appropriately placed at the Department of Aging and Disabilities. The calls that we receive are primarily male. In addition, the chief ask for service is benefits coordination. And then it's kind of split in half to a variety of needs, so a veteran may be requiring housing, food, prescription, you know, assistance, as well as benefits coordination. So it seems to be weighted and polarized on equal fronts on that. I think it's about 41% benefits coordination.
Okay, amazing. Thank you for the information, I appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Kelly, good morning.
Good morning.
Did you ask for less money in your budget this year?
I don't think anyone asked for less money in their budget.
So that, I mean, because I was shocked to see your budget, and it's a pretty significant cut to your budget, so.
200,000 in contractual services.
Yeah, so just. Yeah. So, just, can you walk me through that? Like, what's, you're obviously not serving fewer people.
Sure.
The population is obviously increasing.
Sure.
The demands that you're being asked to cover are greater and greater. What happened? Obviously, there's grant funding that didn't, isn't there, and I get that. I'm assuming, is that some ARPA money and CARES money that's not been backfilled, or is that something else?
No. So, we operate, you know, 33 grants that we get from the Federal Administration for Community Living, which is our federal mothership, and then, you know, allocated down through the State Department of Aging.
Okay.
This is what we put out on the streets, as far as benefits and resources and what we give to the community at large. Who we put out on the streets to deliver these benefits and services and resources are primarily our contractual staff. So, our contractual staff, unlike maybe in other situations where they're hired for a period of time, are responsible for the mere counterparts of merit positions. So, these are individuals that are case managers, that are licensed social works, that are registered nurses, that are going into the communities delivering these grant services. As with every other industry in America, we have had a lapse in the ability to hire competitively for those positions, especially when you get into licensed social workers and, of course, nurses. So, over time, we've, we've had some turnover and a lapse. And so, I believe that in looking at the Budget Office, looked at our historical expenditures, we're under.
So, the adjustment is based on actual spending and what we keep referring to as right sizing the budget. Is that fair?
Correct. It is based on actual spending.
All right. Do you anticipate there will be a decrease in your ability to provide services based on the funding in this budget?
With my superhuman tiny team, absolutely not.
That's a good answer.
Do we have any other questions for the Department of Aging?
One quick one.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe for the Department of, not Department, the Budget Office. My assumption is, because when I saw that, is, is, there's always, in the event your execution exceeds what you, what you're projected or traditionally projected to execute, I'm assuming during either the first or second or third quarter transfer, you all would go back to them and say, hey, we are actually hiring and able to find these people a lot faster. And so, we have reserves available to supplement that in the event that that activity does occur. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Look at the story, like, in the past few years, there's always a good cushion that has to say if they hire more people.
Right. So, when she rings the alarm bell, we're going to be ready to, to jump on and put the fire out, for lack of a better term. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
I just had to comment after Mr. Volkey's question. You all do do so much with such a small department, and you do it with a smile, and you're so responsive. We need to get you shirts that say, what did you say, tiny, human?
Super, superhuman tiny team.
We need to get those shirts made for your department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any other questions regarding your budget. So, y'all do amazing work. And we'll just keep rolling.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have, I'm not my piece of paper. I've gotten back to paper. We have the Circuit Court next. Good morning. We'll let you get assembled, and you have the floor when, when you're ready.
You can find their budget on page 306 of the proposed budget book, and I will turn it over to Judge Schaefer.
I think we're still morning, so good morning. I'm Judge Donna Schaefer, and I want to thank you on behalf of the Circuit Court for this opportunity to speak with me. Doug Hofstedt, our Court Administrator, and Kim Klein, our Director of Court Operations. Like many, we have been working through some difficult years due to the pandemic. We are still digging out of a backlog of family law cases, but great strides have been made. Our operations have returned to close to normal, and most hearings are now once again in person, with even more becoming so within the next month. We are in our 11th year as an electronic courthouse utilizing Maryland judiciary's electronic case management system known as MDAC. MDAC has now been implemented in all Maryland courts, including Baltimore City, which went, which went live on May 6. Some of our staff assisted Baltimore City with their implementation. For this year's budget, we worked closely with the Budget Office to submit a conservative budget request within the confines of the budget projection provided us. Our overall budget submission includes multiple grant business units for which we receive state funding. These funds are used for programs such as our drug court, family services, and alternative dispute resolution, among others. Security continues to be a high priority for the court, and the biggest development has been the sheriff's commitment to have a deputy in every circuit court courtroom, no matter what the case type. Two security assessments have been done, one by Homeland Security and one by the Maryland judiciary. We will evaluate the results of those assessments to determine what more we can do to make our courthouse as safe as possible. With the waning of the pandemic, the court experienced an uptick in public outreach programs last year. We welcomed the Maryland Wise Youth and Government Program, Anarundel County's Government Academy Program, and the Leadership Arundel Program. We hosted visits with a delegation from Vietnam, the Slovak Ministry of Justice, and a judge from Uganda. We had three visits by students in legal studies programs at the United States Naval Academy, and we hosted the local, regional, and semifinal rounds of the Maryland Mock Trial Competition. Probably the two most fulfilling public outreach programs of the past year were National Adoption Day and our collaboration with the Art Program at Annapolis High School. Students in the IB, AP, Apex Unified, and Studio Artist classes created a series of paintings entitled "Experience Maryland." These paintings now fill the entrance lobby at the courthouse. The plan is for a new group of artists to provide paintings every year or two. Other notable accomplishments were the addition of a second full-time staff Spanish interpreter through judiciary funding, and the graduation of 36 individuals from our drug court program over the last 12 months. So, at this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Volkey.
This is very weird for me to be on this side, as you know.
We're reversal.
That's right. That's right. Typically, I'm on the hot seat. No, just a couple of questions, Your Honor. So, on the grant funding for Circuit Court, that looks like that's a decrease year over year of $142,500. Was there a grant that we were giving you, or was that another source of grant funds that are now not there?
So, all our grant funds are, not all of our grants, most of our grant funds are from the state judiciary.
Okay, gotcha.
And then, we do have some federal funds that will supplement our drug court.
Okay. And then, one other question. On the $100,000 on the capital outlay, it looked like in the notes that was related to one-time costs for furniture. What is that going to be used for in the courthouse?
Yep, I can answer that. We're actually going to use it for furniture for all of the judges' chambers. It's now 20 years old. I don't know if you've been back to chambers this year, but we've got chairs falling apart, and we, we really need to. We haven't replaced anything in 20 years in the chambers. So, that's the goal. It's in the Court Special Fund. The county wants us to spend that down as they requested last year. So, that's what we're going to use that funds for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, almost. Could you touch on the backlog, where you were at the height and where you are now?
Yep. So, I don't have exact numbers for you, and I can get that for you when I get back to my desk. But right now, I mean, our filings are up right now. So, we are backed, almost back to pre-COVID filings. And we are clearing as much as we are getting new filings every single year. So, I can definitely get those numbers for you. But, you know, Judge Schaefer made some changes to the way we assign some cases. So, we were able to get most of the family law backlog out. So, we added a couple of trials here and there. We asked senior judges to come in and help out. So, that has helped tremendously. But we are right now back to scheduling trials the way we were pre-COVID. So, instead of waiting a whole year, we're back to waiting four months, depending upon the length of trial. So, using that parameter, our cases are getting finalized faster.
That was exactly the information I was looking for, the one year to four months.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Circuit Court? Thank you so much for being here this morning.
Thank you for your time.
We're going to move ahead with Social Services.
the proposed budget, I believe there's part on Social Services.
Good morning. I was checking. We're almost at afternoon, and I realize I'm what's keeping you from lunch. My first time before you, I want to first say that I'm very honored to serve as the Director of the Anarundel County Department of Social Services. My name is Rachel McConaughey, and I'm here with my Assistant Director, Karen Taylor, who oversees our administration, and then our Budget Analyst, Darlene. As a lifelong Anarundel County resident, I want to thank you very much for all your support. I've seen firsthand, through living here, as well as working here for 25 years, what your support has done for the residents of Anarundel County. So, thank you so much. Our main mission is really to support individuals and families, to make sure that children and vulnerable adults are safe, as well as supporting individuals and families towards obtaining economic benefits, employment, and making sure that we're able to promote self-sufficiency. I know that you're very familiar, but a quick refresher, where we have four main divisions. We have our Social Services Division, where that oversees our child welfare and adult services. We have a Family Investment, and that's all our economic services that we provide to citizens. We have our Community Initiatives and Programs, where we house our homeless services, volunteer coordination, and holiday sharing. And then, we have our administrative services, the backbone. We have around 347 employees, about 74% are state, and about 25, 26% are county. With all your support, that helps in making sure that our mission is achieved. We had so many accomplishments, but I'm trying to keep it short and sweet. So, while we serve thousands of children and families, in our family preservation services, we served almost 1,000. And the majority of the children, 98%, were able to remain safely with their families or with their kinship providers and not enter into foster care. With our Community Outreach Program, we've continued to expand, and we're able to serve over 3,000 citizens in designated libraries, community centers, and in the actual neighborhoods themselves. And then, our Annapolis Family Support Center, we helped with non-custodial parents in collecting child support and helping them with self-sufficiency for training and employment. We also served about 62 families with Teen Parent Alternative Program and English as a Second Language Program by providing onsite childcare services for parents to be able to attend those classes. Our Family Investment, we received over 37 new applications for economic assistance here in Anarundel County alone. That's our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, formerly known as Food Stamps, Temporary Cash, Temporary Disability Assistance, and Emergency Assistance to families and children. And 70% of our SNAP recipients are children. Approximately 5,000 customers a month still come in face-to-face to apply for benefits or seek assistance. And we help facilitate well over 1,000 job placements. And with those job placements, with a starting wage of about $72 an hour. And it's been a great partnership, and we actually have a state model with our local workforce development that helps us with that. Our Community Initiatives Program, we continue to be able to go out on the street in the communities and assist families and individuals that are experiencing homelessness. Our Back to School Programs, we're instrumental in helping elementary schools and middle schools making sure that children have the basic supplies that they need. We continue to have a unique partnership with Sarah's House, which has a blending of federal, county, and private partnerships, in order to make sure that families experiencing homelessness have emergency housing, as well as treatment and job training. Funding to both the shelter and housing services come from the county, the Army, and Catholic Charity Services. And you can see that they have a, a couple different types of programs. They have the Rapid Rehousing, which provides short-term rental assistance and services. And the goals are really to help obtain housing quickly and increase self-sufficiency and keep families housed. What's new in our fiscal budget this year, we identified a need in trying to shorten the gap in providing comfort kits. When life happens and there's been emergencies, whether it be cold weather that happened early in the season at the end of last year, and folks that weren't prepared, or whether it be natural disasters, making sure that we're able to provide what families and individuals may need, such as housing, blankets, hygiene kits, and other supplies. We are also looking forward to a holiday sharing database. We're concerned that we haven't had a database since 2019, and we've been doing a lot of hand counting and matching. And we're concerned, bless you, that we haven't been able to meet all the needs of the county. And so, we're hoping by having a database, bless you, that we will be able to meet the needs of the children, adults, and families in our county. Initially, when we submitted our package, we did ask for several thousand dollars for supplemental nutrition benefits in the summer for children. Last week, our Governor Wes Moore signed that bill. So, actually, the state is picking up the tab. And so, with that, the program is called Sunbucks. And each eligible child between the ages of five to 18 will receive $120 in benefits from June to August. So, that's pretty exciting. Some key takeaways, the $7 million of support through the county really helps us in supplementing that state budget of $30 million to make sure that the citizens here in Anarundel County have what they need for self-sufficiency and safety. I just want to thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. I'm waiting for Mr. Volkey's light. No questions?
Just so that it doesn't look like I'm being one-sided, I've been messaging with Mr. Chumbauer. I was going to ask you the same questions that I asked to Department of Aging, but he's already set me straight. So, he's explained how 99% of the decrease in funding is through grants, and we've been back and forth. Just want to put that on the record.
Thank you.
So, everybody knows why I didn't ask those questions. Thank you.
Don't worry. I was not offended.
Ms. Rodbien.
Thank you. I just figured I'd say welcome to your new position. Glad to have you here and glad to see you face-to-face.
Thank you. Likewise. Thank you for having me.
Mr. Smith.
I was actually going to say the same thing. Look forward to meeting or sitting down with you at one point, just to kind of talk overall strategy and vision that you have for the department, so, at some point in the future.
I would love to. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. I don't see any other hard-hitting questions for you. So, welcome to Anarundel County in your position, and we look forward to working with you. And I believe the council is prepared to recess for a 30-minute lunch.
Thank you.
We will be back. We will be back. Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to resume our budget presentations. Next up, we have the Orphans Court with Chief Judge Vicki Gibson and your team. Good afternoon and welcome. Whenever you're settled, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Kyle Madden. I'm the Budget Analyst for the Orphans Court. You can find their, oh, thank you. You can find their budget on page 309, and I'll turn it over to Judge Gibson.
So thank you for having us and supporting our court. We pretty much have, we've been very busy trying to implement practices that will bring us into greater compliance. So we have implemented a program for interpretative services. Prior to this current term, we did not have that program so that people could not access easily court interpretative services if English was their second language. In addition to that, we've also implemented a mediation program. These are things that are still getting off the ground and require support services and also require oversight. The budget that we initially submitted included a position that got scrapped by the county executive, so we're not pushing for that. But what we are pushing for and hope that you all will support is our court getting a needed audiovisual IT update that somehow we got overlooked during when all the COVID money came in and all the other courts got updated, our court got overlooked. So that's the biggest dollar item that you see reflected in our budget. And so pretty much that's it, in case anybody has any questions.
Mr. Smith.
Judge, can I ask, how many cases do you all, what's the term, I guess, litigate each year or process each year?
I can't tell you that number over the top of our head, top of my head. It varies from week to week. We have a very active docket, and so we've been encouraging people to try to reach decisions among themselves more than us jumping into rendering decisions for them so that they could experience, have a sense of self-determination. So we've been really pushing alternatives to dispute resolution.
But even in those cases, you still interact with them too?
Yes, we do, we do.
So how many people from the public you think you, just ballpark, it doesn't have to be?
Oh, we have hundreds in a year, maybe even, you know, in excess of thousands, I don't know.
And so the staff, do you have staff?
We do not have staff. What we do is we have support from our clerk, which is the Register of Wills. And the Register of Wills, we have two dedicated staff, and I think a half of a staff member, so like maybe 2.5 or something like that. And they handle our docket, but it's through the Office of the Register of Wills as our clerk. We had asked for a law position for, paid position for our law clerk. We've had a volunteer law clerk over the last year, and that was unsuccessful in that first round with the county executives. So in light of the significant upgrades that we need in the court, we prioritize that.
And your budget is, it's not, is 280K?
Yes. Yeah, so it's relatively small in comparison, you know, but there are things that we should have been doing that we weren't doing, things that we need to do that we're struggling to do at the current time because we don't have any staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Judge, good afternoon. We are in afternoon. Okay. So it looks like the upgrade in the audiovisual costs or supplies, that's a one-time expense, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then with respect to the judge's salaries, so it looks like there's an increase, but when I go back to the FY '23 budget, it looks like that increase happened even in FY '24 budget.
So what they did was, previously, when we received an increase, it was a one-time increase for the four years.
Okay.
Last time, the way that it had been proposed and was approved was that it was on incremental steps. So that's all of it.
So it's just built onto a schedule that you all are moving up?
Exactly.
Gotcha, understood. Thank you.
I don't see any more questions from the team. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, and thank you for supporting our court. We appreciate it.
We'll move on to the Liquor Board. Good afternoon. Ms. Judy Hagner and I, a little birdie told me, we're at 48 years serving the county.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Wayne Harris, welcome. And when you're all settled, you have the floor.
I'm waiting for Darlene here to, sorry, do her thing.
Good morning. My name is Darlene Flynn with the Budget Office, and Board of Licensed Commissioners' budget begins on page 322 in the proposed budget.
Ready? Good afternoon now. I want to thank everyone for having us here. I know I've been here for quite a number of years now. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Wayne Harris, my chairman, who hopefully one year will take this over. Our budget, as you know, were approved by the State Controller. I don't want to say we make our own money, but we derive our, I mean, our money, our license fees, our fines, everything pays for our own budget. Anything left over at the end of the year goes back to the county. So it's a good way for everybody. This year, we were putting in for an increase 35% for our license fees, which we have not had an increase in 20 years. We are the fourth lowest in the state of Maryland for our license fees. And we're the fourth highest in population. So, I mean, we do need to raise them up some. It did not pass in legislation, so hopefully next year, we can do something, if not 35, maybe a little lower. So hopefully, we'll have more money to turn back to the county. We do want to start implementing classes for our new applicants, so when they can come in, like maybe on a quarterly basis, that they can learn about the rules and regulations and the state code, and they won't be running into problems of serving minors and over-serving people, drunk driving, things of that nature. So we need money in order to put these classes on. So we haven't, I know a lot of the other counties in the state of Maryland are implementing them, and it's very, very successful. So we're hoping to start that in the future. But that's all I have. Wayne, do you have anything?
No, I think you've done a pretty good job with the overall, but it is, I think, important to our licensees that we work with them. And in doing so, the best way to do that is to make sure they're aware of the laws and what their employees hopefully are not going to be found in non-compliance. And the only way to do that is to make sure that they understand the rules and regulations, just like with the Motor Vehicle Administration or other annotated codes. So we've now stepped up into a time where our inspectors are going out with iPads, which makes things a little easier. We walk out of an establishment and instantly the licensees for those establishments have a report in front of them. They know exactly what's taken place at that time, even if they weren't there. They could be sitting home or in their office or whatever. One of their managers might have met our inspector. When he signs off, instantly those licensees get it. So we're trying to work with all of the establishments, all the licensees, and try to improve everything, including compliance. We think, of course, compliance is important. We don't want our youth, or for that matter, anybody over-served. So the budget that we have in front of you is just more support for that. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I apologize if I didn't hear this when you said it at the beginning. But just to be clear, your licensing fees are set by the state?
Yes.
So, okay, so that's not something we can help you with?
No, ma'am.
But we could encourage our state counterparts to do that in the next legislative session?
That would be very helpful, yes.
Because I do think, I mean, I also didn't remember the number of years you said, but it had been some number of years.
It's been over 20 years since we've had an increase.
I feel like it's time for an update to that.
Yes, we do, too.
So let's, I'll try to keep that on my radar.
Great, thank you.
And if I may add to that also, the reason it didn't pass this year is we were late in the timing. And the Senate, we had full approval and support with the Senate. By the time it got over to the House and then we met with them, we were at the last minute of the last hour on the last day. So we decided just to hold off on the bills until next year and then we'll resubmit. But thank you, I appreciate any assistance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time today. Thank you for being patient with the Council.
Thank you.
Good day.
We're going to move on to the CAO's office. Welcome, Ms. Anderson.
Hello.
When you're settled, you have the floor.
Thank you. If it's okay, may I start with the county executive budget on page 87? Just do these two out of order. Is that all right? Sorry. I know it is different than the printed agenda, but it's first in the book. So I will start with the county executive budget. My name is Christine Anderson. I am the Chief Administrative Officer. This is very short and sweet. It is deleting one position, so you actually will see a decrease in the total size of the budget in this budget unit. There are a variety of component units that are in here, included Laurel Racetrack and Video Lottery Impact Fund, and details for those can be found, for the Laurel Racetrack can be found on page 91, gives you a list there. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that one.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I'll just say, we always like it when the numbers go down.
I appreciate that. Well, hold on to your hat, then. If you're all right, I'll move on to the CAO budget.
That's great, thanks.
Thank you. That begins on page 103 in the budget books. As you probably know, there are eight different funds inside the CAO's budget. The Community Development Fund, which will be presented by ACDS when they come before you later, Visitors Bureau Fund and Arts Council Funds. These are budgeted here, but as you know, those are directly related to the hotel tax. The Workforce Development Fund will be discussed by our friends in Workforce Development when they come before you. The Housing Trust Fund and the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund will also be discussed by ACDS. The General Fund, which is what I'm actually here for, and then there's some grant funds as well. This year, you will also be hearing from the Economic Development Corporation. As that, last year, we moved that budget inside the CAO to be consistent with the other quasi-units. So moving ahead into the specific bureaus that make up the CAO's office, on page 105 is the Police Accountability Board. There are two positions that are budgeted here, and the majority of the operational increases this year are related to statutorily required stipends for the PAB as well as the ACC. We also needed some additional support to operate external trial boards, so you'll see some funds there for that. I will skip page 106 because that's Economic Development, and I'll move to page 107, which makes up the heart of the CAO's office budget. There's roughly a $430,000 increase in the budget this year. The majority of that is personnel changes just associated with the current staff, but also we are requesting the addition of one additional person. We have a contractual who works in the Arundel Stat Division, and we'd like to make that person a full-time position. And so that's the one new position you see here. That is a filled position. We have also added funds this year for the Office of Hispanic-Latino and Multicultural Resources. If you remember, last year, that was a new office, and we created it with just a position. What we're asking for now is some additional funding for training and outreach, about $20,000 for that, as well as the creation of a new grant fund. We're calling it the Cultural Activation Grant Fund. As some of you may be aware, there are a lot of wonderful festivals, parades, events that are supported throughout the year, that are scheduled throughout the year, and frequently they will come to county government and say, hey, can you help us with a sponsorship of some kind? This would be the place for all of those folks to come, apply, and request those grant funds. Unless there are any other questions on that, I will let the Budget Office answer any questions about the ARPA Fund grant transition that's happening as well in this unit. And with that, I'll move on to page 108, which is the Office of Equity and Human Rights. This office was also funded and started in fiscal '24 and supported recently by legislation that you all passed, so we thank you for that. There are a couple of new grants in this unit, including $1.2 million in federal funds from the Shepherd-Bird Hate Crimes Grant Fund, which we'll be able to administer over four years. And we also received some funds for connected devices to be able to hand out Chromebooks to eligible county residents. We also have requested some funding for memberships, meanings, and some training and coaching for special groups. And a position last year was approved for investigator, and that position was just filled, so that work continues. The Contingency Fund is budgeted on page 109, and it stayed at $13 million, which is the historical request. The Community Development Corporation is discussed on page 110. You'll hear from them. Workforce Development is on page 111, and then Tourism and Arts, as I mentioned, is funded by the hotel tax, and that rounds out the CAO's budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to go back to, you mentioned the grant to assist with events. Can you repeat exactly what those events were again? Did you say parades as well?
It could be parades, it could be a festival, that, again, focusing specifically on something very unique to a particular group of citizens.
Okay. Could these events potentially involve the special events permits?
Yep, potentially, they could.
Could the grant money be used to fund any costs associated with that permit?
We don't have the grant parameters, the fund parameters specifically set up, but I assume that would be one of the things that we would allow an entity to request support for.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that the contribution to the Housing Trust Fund is smaller this year, but it looks like it was larger last year, and I didn't remember that. Do you, can you tell us what the balance is and anything about how much we've, you know, how much we've spent?
If that's okay, can we hold that question until ACDS is here? She'd be, Erin will be able to give you a full accounting of that.
Absolutely. I feel like I saw her.
She is here, yeah. And she presented.
Yes, I'm happy to wait. That's fine.
Do you mind? Thank you. I don't want to say something and then have the expert come in, as they should, say I'm wrong.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you.
I was going to be very disappointed, Mr. Volkey.
You were? The Office of Equity and Human Rights, there is $91,700 from the General Fund that's being spent, but I can't tell what it's being spent on, and I don't, I'm curious if you can tell me what that is, because there is obviously the grant funding, which is covering some of the expenses.
So we have the just regular increases in personnel costs for the three pins that are in that office, so that's the majority of it.
Okay. So then the vast majority of the other things that you're doing are being paid for out of grant funding?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, am I still up? Okay. Going up to the Management and Control section, so I know you said you were going to let Budget answer what's happening in terms of the ARPA funds, so.
Is this their time now?
That's the segue.
Sam Chiriacco from the Budget Office. We have, as stated on page 107, 7.98 million is for the Revenue Replacement Fund. We were able to claim, and Stephen or Chris, if I say this wrong, please correct me, we were able to claim up to $10 million, but some of that was used for the Child Care Fund to help supplant during COVID. So this is the rest of that funding that we're realizing as lost revenue recognized for this fiscal year as the year, as the ARPA grant, as you know, is ending at the end of the calendar year. And then the other $2.62 million that is budgeted is for capital projects. And Christine, I think I have on your list what those capital projects are. One's a grinder pump, and there's a park and recs project, I believe.
There is, yes. Brooklyn Park Community Center.
And Brooklyn Park, yes.
And a facility lighting project as well.
Those are just pay-go funds to go to the capital project to finish spending the ARPA funding as we need to do so by the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't see any more lights.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, I see, Erin. We are now going to move on to ACDS with Ms. Karpowitz.
to say something, Sam?
Nope.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon, Council Chair Pickard and distinguished council members. I'm Erin Karpowitz. I'm the CEO of Arundel Community Development Services. I have a frog in my throat today. I apologize, allergies. With me today, I have Beth Brush, our Chief Planning Officer, and also Tracy Mullery and Elisha Harig Bling are in the audience in case any grant-related questions come up. So, if I could get to the next slide. The next slide shows our budget. It's our pleasure to serve as the county's Housing and Community Development Agency. We create and preserve affordable housing opportunities. We provide a lot of direct programming services, and we plan and administer for over 125 sub-recipient grants, which primarily support affordable housing and services in our underserved communities throughout Anaronda County. In the Development, in the Community Development Services Corporation budget on page 110, you're going to see several expenditure classes, including $7.7 million in the Community Development Fund. This is our alphabet soup of federal HUD entitlement programs that ACDS administers, as well as $2.3 million in continuum-of-care funding, which is funding that goes to end and prevent homelessness. And we manage that on behalf of the county and the county's coalition to end homelessness. That budget increased about $200,000 this year, and that's thanks to our coalition and our staff's coordination and getting additional funds through the competitive grant process. Also, under our line item is the County General Fund and the Housing Trust Fund, and I'll get into those details in a moment. Just to highlight a couple of things, if you want to go to the next slide, Sam. We've got, in the Housing Trust Fund, we have $6.2 million, and that is, that's down, and Councilwoman Rodvian, you noted that that's less than last year. A large part of that is last year. That big, that big amount was carryover from the initial ceding of the trust fund. The administration and the council approved an initial $10 million. So that funding kind of carried over, and so that was a large expenditure. This year, the Budget Office is projecting that we're going to have $7.5 in revenue trust, in revenue for the trust fund from the transfer tax. And of that, ACDS, or the administration's, included $6.2 million to go directly to Arundel Community Development Services, with an additional $1.3 million going to our partners at the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families to continue some of the programming that they've been doing. So we're coordinating very closely with them, but we are not going to be administering that funding directly. It will go directly in their budget, and you'll hear from the partnership in a moment. What I'd like to do is just go, if you go to the next slide, highlight a few things from the trust fund, what we've been doing, and then also what we plan to do. So one of our biggest line items is our Affordable Rental Housing Development Activities. We utilize these funds to make low-interest loans to developers of affordable units. This year alone, we've closed $13 million in loan funds to preserve three multifamily projects and create four new construction projects to provide affordable rental housing for people, mostly for people who are earning at 60% of area median income and below. In addition, we've continued to add to our scattered site portfolio, where we do smaller scattered site developments, where we acquire older townhomes and row homes and older communities to revitalize them. We do a lot in the Brooklyn Park community, some in the Still Meadows and Spring Meadows communities, and we've been trying to expand to other areas where it's affordable to purchase the units. We also support groups like the Chesapeake, the Chesapeake Neighbors, which is an affiliate of the Ark of the Chesapeake. They do smaller developments as well, not just for their clients, but also for their staff. So it's been really great to be able to provide the trust funds to do that. Based on projects that we have in the pipeline right now, not projects that we've closed already, but projects that are coming in, where we've provided soft commitments, and our Board of Directors and Development Committee have reviewed the loans and thought that they're a good idea or about to do that, we will fully, have fully expended all the trust fund dollars that have been allocated for rental development. And so, you know, this new allocation that we're proposing will help us be able to be on the lookout and go and find new projects to fund new affordable units. Under, another category is eviction prevention. The proposed budget includes $1.4 million in Housing Trust Fund dollars to continue a very dialed-down eviction prevention program. This will be coupled with $2 million in carryover funds from FY '24 that we did not need to spend, because we have really tightened up the requirements for the program and really also been able to utilize our ARPA funding this fiscal year. So we have some carryover trust fund dollars that we can use. And again, we think it's important to continue that program, but at a smaller level. Our priority is to create new units so that we can really increase the supply while we can, you know, so that we eliminate the need to have eviction prevention assistance. I don't know that it will ever be fully eliminated, but greatly dialed down. And just to give you some perspective, you know, this would provide about $3.4 million for ACDS to administer this year. We've administered an average of over $9 million for the last four years, so it's really a dialed-down program. One thing that we've been able to do as well, okay, that's right, no, that's right. Another great program that we have is our Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, and we're providing basically vouchers to people who are trying to get on their feet. Most of these families have been experiencing homelessness, and the idea is that they get a voucher, they get into a unit for 12 months, and then they increase their income and their employment prospects, and they can, they can move on and take over the payment themselves. We're doing that in partnership with the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families, and together we've been able to house over 63 people. We are also supporting the Housing Commission and allowing them to expand some of their, their programming to provide more tenant-based vouchers. And then also under the House, oh, and sorry, I forgot to mention, we're able to use a lot of carryover funds for that, too, because we had some, we had Home ARP and some other county funds that we were able to use this fiscal year, so our trust fund dollars are able to be carried over, but we may be coming back for an appropriation next year. Similarly, on the operating costs for transitional housing, this is a way that we're able to support different nonprofits that are providing transitional housing for people. For example, you see Patriot's House, that's a house that, a home that provides transitional housing for veterans, and we also have been able to provide some transitional housing for people that are exiting in incarceration and participating in the Turnaround Thursday Program. Since a lot of our, our funding has been utilized in that program, or a lot of that program was expected to be utilized by nonprofit partners who operate transitional housing, they've been able to utilize some Home ARP dollars. That was a one-time appropriation to us from the federal government. So again, we do have some carryover funds, so we're not actually asking for more money on that, but I wanted to share some of our successes on that front. And then also, if you go, yeah, that's it. Under our General Fund request, we have a slight increase for the staff costs associated with our Financial Empowerment Counseling, and that's just due to staffing costs going up. That's, most of the program costs have to do with staff. And then it also includes a salary, salary and benefits for Chief Affordable Housing Officer to take on many of the management of many of these new loans that we're doing, but also the backend, where we don't necessarily have administrative funds to cover. So portfolio management, managing refinance requests, managing subordination requests, also managing the implementation of a lot of these special zoning provisions, which I'm excited that the council is passing, workforce housing, housing for elderly and modest means, the BWI area that, you know, has, has some zoning provisions to create new units. And then also helping to create and find new development opportunities and new financing opportunities for us, similar to some of the mixed-income housing that Montgomery County has been, you know, recognized for in recent years. We want to get out there and find those creative financing techniques. And finally, in the General Fund, it includes a one-time expenditure to support our office, to create a more efficient office space. We now have people, how our staff, our committed staff is, you know, they're in closets, their supply closets that have been converted into offices, as well as our community conference room, where we're supposed to be having a lot of our public hearings and listening sessions. That's been taken over by staff because our space is so small. So retrofitting our space and creating more efficient workstations is, is part of our plan for next fiscal year. And then finally, under Special Grant Revenue, we have our Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. This is a special fund that the council authorized in 2023, and the county has asked ACDS to administer the special fund. It's taking a small portion of the revenue that comes in from cannabis sales from the state, and the idea is to create grant opportunities for communities most impacted by disproportionate arrests from cannabis in the past. And the idea is that it will operate similar to the Video Lottery Terminal Fund and the Laurel Race Course Impact Fund that we also administer on behalf of the county. And I know that Christine mentioned the Laurel Race Course and Video Lottery Terminal Funds in her, in her briefing, but we did provide a copy of all those grants to the county auditor, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about those. Thank you very much. I appreciate.
We don't have any questions. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
We have workforce development. Mr. Kirkland-Murray, I see your team.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our FY '24 county budget request. Again, I'm Kirkland-Murray, President and CEO of Anaronda Workforce Abailment Corporation. I have Chuck Knapp with me, our CFO, and then Becky Leonard is in the audience, our Director of Strategic Initiatives and Grant Development. So, I'll go to the next slide, please. So you guys know us. We're the workforce entity for Anaronda County, both, working with both county residents to prepare them to start transition in advance in careers that lead to a family sustained wage, along with working with Anaronda County businesses to make sure they have the skilled workforce they need to be successful and continue to grow here in Anaronda County. So real quick, just to go through, oh, by the way, our budget request is on page 111. There's two, two amounts. One is for our county request of $576,100, and the other is for $2.4 million, which is our federal allocation for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. That's just a pass through to the county to workforce development. You know, our team has been very busy over the last 10 months, so it's really hard to choose, to really pick out a few of our highlights, but there are a few that I would like to share with you. One, of course, is our Future Success Program. This is our summer program, really focusing on Anaronda County youth and young adults between the ages of 16 and 24. Last summer was our largest program to date. We had 170 interns with 63 business partners. So far this year, we, this program will be quite a bit smaller due to lack of funding. We were able to use ARPA funds last year to fund our program, and now that we don't have, now that we don't have ARPA funds, we're, you know, we're going to downsize our program. But so far, we have reached, so far, we have received 270 applications from young, from youth and young adults to be part of our program, and already have 45 businesses that are interested. As you know, the state of Maryland has set a very ambitious goal for increasing the number of registered apprenticeships in the state to 60,000 apprentices by 2030. Anaronda County's local workforce board in AWDC, we have set an internal goal of 6,000, to have 6,000 registered apprentices, apprentices by 2030. Anaronda County is about 10% of the state population and 10% of the labor force of the state, so we felt that it was, you know, fair for us to look for having 10% of that goal. So we're working very closely with county businesses to promote the concept of apprenticeships and work with them through the application process to, for them to set up a registered apprenticeship program. We're also very closely working with the county execs office and county government to have apprenticeship programs, especially youth apprenticeship programs in county government. This will allow county to start building its future workforce. We had one big success at the last State Apprenticeship Council meeting, where we had Wreckin' Parks get their youth apprenticeship for childcare approved. Helping our most vulnerable citizens, we were, we, Anaronda Workforce Abailment Corporation on the behalf of the county received a grant for opioid recovery. This was really to help our areas that are highly impacted by opioids, to help make sure those residents are, again, getting the training, the skills they need to start transition in advance on their career. We're about to close out that grant. We, over the four years that we had that grant, we served 158 residents. We created many partnerships, many of those residents were, were served in partnership with several of the recovery centers here in Anaronda County. That work will continue. Even though that grant funding is going, we will continue to leverage our federal funds to continue that program. Due to the tragedy of the Key Bridge, workforce development, along with partnership with the Maryland Department of Labor, have been very active in making sure that we're supporting both, you know, residents who have lost their jobs, plus businesses, in partnership with Economic Development, working with businesses who have been impacted by the bridge collapse. Stats coming from the Maryland Department of Labor, there were 1,370 individuals throughout the state that have received unemployment due to either the foreclosure or other impacts of the collapse of the bridge. Of that 1,337, 210, or 16%, were Anaronda County residents. We've had individuals coming into our Career Center up in Lithgow Heights. We've helped them fill out their applications for unemployment and provide other assistance to them. As you know, the governor was very aggressive in putting out state recovery programs through the Port Act. One of the programs that were administered by the Maryland Department of Labor, our main partner, was the Worker Retention Program. This, this funding was going to businesses to help them to retain their workers during this time. So far, there have been 224 conditional approvals for, 200, excuse me, 224 conditional approvals statewide. 13 of those came from Anaronda County, which is about 6%. Anaronda County, so far, for those conditional approvals, it equals to 926,000 of funds. Anarunda County, so far, for those conditional approvals, it equals to 926,000 of funds going to Anarunda County businesses that protected 182 workers. You know that we would, the county exec asked us to help with the school bus shortage. We were pleased that last year, in September, we started with all the routes filled, but we're continuing that work. We're still continuing to partner with the school bus companies to help them attract and train skilled bus, uh, school bus drivers. So we're using that, continue to work with them to help the county with that. Next slide, please. So here's a few metrics on our overall performance so far in FY24. You know, fifty, over 1,500 residents served, including resume assistance, career planning, interview prep. 883 have received attentive services. This is where our career staff are working with, our career coaches are working with them to create career plans, identify skill gaps, help them to identify training that they would need to address those skill gaps, and also mitigating any barriers that they may have to employment. 324 people have received skills training. Working with our businesses, we have provided assistance, service, we have provided over 4,243 services to businesses in Anarunda County. A large portion of that, of course, is recruiting services, helping them to identify the talent that they need, but we also have helped them to upscale their existing workers. Our businesses appreciate the work we're doing. We have a 97% satisfaction rate for businesses. And then also, one of the things that we've done to make sure that we're building a skilled pipeline for the businesses in Anarunda County, we have identified five high-growth industries in Anarunda County. We call it HITCH, healthcare, IT, transportation, construction, hospitality. Each of those industries has a dedicated person that works with those industries, and then we also have what we call business collaboratives. So these are multiple businesses within those industries that come together to identify any workforce challenges they're having. The businesses come up with the solutions to address those challenges, and then it's up to AAWDC, along with our other partners, including Economic Development, Community College, K-12 system, to implement those solutions that they address, that they identify. Next slide, please. So as you guys know, that Blueprint for Maryland Future, under pillar three of Blueprint for Maryland Future, that funding's coming to the local workforce board. AAWDC is the fiscal, as the Fiscal Administrative Local Workforce Board, that money's coming to AAWDC. This year, we estimate that it's going to be a little over five, about $5.1 million that will be coming for career counseling. This, this past year was the first year that we started this initiative. We started with, we made the decision to start in the middle schools, start with those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. In the eighth grade this fall, and then we expanded to the seventh grade and the sixth grade. This includes all the comprehensive alternative char, and charter schools in the county. Middle school is focused on career exposure and exploration. Many successful career days and fairs were held at the middle schools this year. At least three more are still planned before the end of the school year. This summer, we're planning activities over the summer to keep students engaged and continue to identify, help them to explore different careers. We're partnering with Anarunda Community College, Maryland Leadership, and university startups to provide summer camps. Some of the topics that will be covered will be entrepreneurship, skills trades, and culinary. Next slide, please. So again, this is our budget, our request this year. This is about, total budget request is 576,100. This is $25,100 increase over last year's, and what that is going to is a 3% COLA for all staff that are charging to our county grant. This funding supports our corporate operations since we split from the county, mostly personnel who are involved in county projects and cannot be charged to federal sources. Our grant development cannot be charged, legislative work with the county, communications, working with the PIO work, my time as I am involved with the county, I do sit on the county exec's cabinet, performance, our performance team for Rundle stat requirements and strategic initiative plannings. Other contracts like legal and IT, a portion of those contracts are charged to our county grant. We also support the workforce system. Several county agencies or quasi-agencies are part of the workforce development system and are required to pay into that, and we cover those causes for the partnership, for the children, youth and families, EDC, the libraries, housing, and, and around the county public schools. So, again, as, as I've said to you guys every year, the county portion of our total budget, we are estimating our total budget to be about $10 million this year. The county portion is, is 4% of that total, but it's also the most crucial part that we have. This is what allows us to be flexible, nimble, and innovative in addressing whatever workforce needs that come up here in Anarunda County. So again, I want to thank you all for all your support. You guys have been great partners with us. I know that we send you out information and you pass it on to your constituents. That is the way that we get to make sure that we're servicing all Anarunda County residents. So thank you again for this time, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Nobody has any questions at this time? Mr. Murray and team, sounds like you did a thorough enough job. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the work that you do. I know this has been a wild couple of months for your team, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I think my, my child has seen some of your folks in, in middle school with some career coaching.
Oh, good. Definitely. If you guys, I mean, please, any feedback that you're getting from your constituents, or if you have kids in the, in middle and high school, please let us know. We really want to, we really think that this career coaching initiative is really, is going to help set kids on the right path to good paying jobs.
Well, I won't say what, what career representative came to, came to my son's classroom, but he said, "I thought it was going to be boring, but it ended up being somewhat interesting." Okay, all right. Adulting, you know? They need a little, a little window into what being an adult means.
Yes.
Thank you.
But thank you all.
We have Anarundale County Economic Development. I see the team.
Hey, hello. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Council Chair Pickard and members of the council. I'm Amy Gowan, President and CEO for Anarundale Economic Development Corporation. And with me today is Lisa Grunder, our Vice President of Administration, here to present our budget. And then also in the audience is Wes McQuillam, our COO, Stephen Permasch, our Vice President of Finance, and Victoria Zalewski, our brand new Vice President of Communications, if you have any questions, if you decide not to keep your no-question trend at the end going. So if you, so our mission is to support businesses and serve as a catalyst for business growth in the county, thereby increasing the tax base and the quality of life. And we do that through five different functional areas with 18 different staff. And so we have a business development function, we have financial services, marketing communications, agricultural, and just general administration. Next slide. Next slide is our org chart. Basically, that's our management team, highlighted in blue. We are not requesting any new positions this year. This is really a maintenance of effort budget for us. Good, next slide. And so with that maintenance of effort, we're seeking a total of 2.8 million. Most of that goes towards operations for us, with some of it going towards a financial services grant and some towards agricultural programs. You'll see the $150,000 grant from DHCD. That's just a pass-through grant for facade improvements that goes from the county and passes through for us to administer. And so I know that you're all very familiar with our programs, so I'm not going to talk about the stuff that we do every day. I really kind of want to hit on the new initiatives or expanded programs from last year. So in terms of our small women and minority-owned business support, I'm sure you're aware of our highly acclaimed Inclusive Venture Program, or IVP. We just graduated our 11th cohort this year, so that's 111 graduates, and we're about to embark on our 12th cohort. And the exciting news about that is that is going to be in all Spanish. So it'll be our first Spanish-speaking-only cohort. So we're really excited. We just got our metrics back from our first four cohorts, so give or take 40 graduates. And through the program, we've realized 134 jobs and 9.2 million in revenue, just through four cohorts. So we're really excited to be able to now offer this program to our rapidly growing Hispanic population of business owners in Anarundale County. Also, we had another milestone this year with our VOLT program. We reached 20 million loans, and, and that, you'll see the statistics up there. 20 million in loans was about 160 loans, about 2,000 jobs, and about 60 million, 60-plus million in capital investment through that. The new, the new program this year was the VOLT microloan program. So we started that this year, and we wanted to provide a financial vehicle to help some of our smaller businesses that maybe can't access traditional capital, they can't meet the credit underwriting standards, but if they are to go through an accelerator program like IVP or a similar one, we would provide access to a small amount of capital at a very low interest rate for them. So it was really like a nice complement to our IVP program. So that's a new program that we offered this year. And the next slide, and it just, you can see, we did a couple of microloans. We have a couple in the pipeline right now, but I wanted to just show you the loan activity from FY23 compared to '24. As you'll see, so far to date, we've done 31 loans this year. We have nine in the pipeline, so we expect to close about 40 by the end of this year as compared to '24 last year, and we're looking at about 4.2 million, which is almost double the volume that we did last year. So really, the takeaway is just that the demand is high. I think part of it is this high inflationary environment that, you know, the commercial lending environment that we're in. So there's a lot of demand, and we've also been able to accommodate the increased volume with our existing staffing levels. So our finance team has been busy and productive this last year. Next slide. Another area where we're starting to chart some new territory is in revitalization, and of course, with the help of the Town Center Revitalization Manager that was approved in our budget last year. So in less than a year, we've had someone in this position, and we've been able to increase the number of Rundle Community Reinvestment Loans. That's the ACR program for site improvements and facade improvements. So we've been able to better market that, and we are also offering now a tandem grant along with that to just basically leverage those dollars for more exterior improvements. We also have about 400,000 in DHCD funding that we are in our portfolio for administration for facade improvement, sustainable communities, and we're going after, we just applied for another 300,000 DHCD funds for Project Restore. And if successful, those will go towards basically activating six storefronts, three in Odenton and three in Glenbernie, basically matchmaking, putting tenants in those spaces and then helping with the fit outs and the rent payments, if you will. So, and then, I guess finally, and most notably, if you saw our press release, we just issued our first RFP for redevelopment of a county-owned property, 7409 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard. It was released on May 2nd, and the applications are due on June 19th. We are working in partnership with Medco. Thank you for approving our budget adjustment a couple of weeks ago. So we are, we're working with Medco. They're our counterpart at the state. I'm sure you're familiar with them. And basically, we're going to be reviewing these proposals, assessing feasibility, both development and financial feasibility on behalf of the county for that redevelopment of that property into a mixed-use transient, transit-oriented development. And this is really a new area of responsibility for us, so we're really hopeful that it will be successful and that we can continue to offer this service to the county in the future. Next slide? Okay. So as you know, we have administered a Rundle AG for many years, and this year, we hired a new Business Development Director for Agriculture with the unfortunate and tragic passing of longtime AG Coordinator Lisa Barge. So we did use this as an opportunity to look at our traditional programs and see about if there were ways we might want to refresh them. One of the new programs that came out of that was the former Mini Grant Program, was rebranded as ABIG, which is the Agricultural Business Improvement Program. And we were able to, thanks to some sponsorships that we were able to get, we were able to double the amount of money that we were, we allocated. Then we also partnered with Medco to match our funding. So we went from a $10,000 program to what was $38,000 in loans this year to eight different farmers. We were also very active in some state legislation around agriculture and, of course, working with the farming community on the Lothian Grain Elevator this fall. And we continue to support our 10 farmers markets, but we are working right now to relaunch the Glenbernie market, and hopeful, hopefully that that will be back up and running for this market season. If there's one thing that COVID taught us, it is that if there is ever a time that economic development organizations are critical, it's during disasters. And so we were unfortunately called upon to respond to two disasters this year. One was the flood in Annapolis that really hit the city dock area, and then the other was the bridge collapse and the port closure. And the one thing I wanted to note just on the city dock was that, you know, because we're quasi-governmental, we were able to activate quickly. We were up and running with, with a loan program in less than a week, and were able to issue our VOLT disaster recovery loans in, in fast course to be able to provide the immediate relief the businesses needed. And then on the bridge closure and the port piece, you know, we've, as Mr. Murray mentioned, as Mr. Murray mentioned, we've been basically serving kind of as the lead for the county on the economic response. I've been on the governor's economic response team, so we meet weekly in Baltimore with my counterparts in Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and state secretaries to talk about, you know, basically to provide input on what some of their programs were going to look like, the ones that are now rolled out. But we're also able to bring that information back to our businesses in Anarundale and try to help them to access that funding. So we've been, so we've been very involved in the economic piece to that. And then finally, this slide just covers just a few of our new initiatives from last year. We, we brought back Business Appreciation Week for the first time since 2018. We went out and visited 75 businesses through the course of a week with ambassador teams. We had about 15 different department agency heads from the county, so it was a really great way to kind of match up government and private sector for a day and just kind of understand what, you know, what the challenges are of running a business in the county, and we had overwhelming positive support on that. So we're looking forward to continuing to do that. We also, we ran a regional expo called Money Maryland for the first time, and pictured this like a little mini convention almost, where it's like a half a day where we had different panels on access to capital and procurement and local resources. We had our consultant come and talk about entrepreneurship, and it was, it was, it was very successful. We even had a Spanish track that we did in all Spanish, so much so that we, bringing it back and doing it again this year, it'll be on May 31st. We already have 170 businesses that are registered, so we're looking forward to that. And finally, we've just been doing a lot on the regional level. As many of you know, Greater Baltimore Committee, GBC, has had a newish leader, probably a year now, and they've been engaging in a number of efforts. So we've been at the table for all of them. The Regional Tech Hub, which is a regional, Baltimore regional designation that allows, gives us access as a reason, region to about 70 million in EDA funds for just this round. So we've been working in conjunction with them and this regional consortium on both the designation and the application. We also hosted a economic roundtable to help develop the Regional 10-Year Economic Opportunity Plan, which I think they're going to launch like in a week or so at their annual meeting. But we wanted them to hear from Anarundale County, so we brought, and that's a picture of the roundtable. We had a number of our local leaders and community-based and civic-based leaders at that as well. So with that, I'll just, and by just kind of reiterating that I wanted to hit on some of the new initiatives that we have undertaken this year, but know that we're still providing the support that we always provide to the business community. I think anyone that follows us on social media can see that, you know, we're on the streets, we're meeting with the businesses, we are out for, you know, nurturing the strategic partnerships that we've had for, for a long time. And I think when you consider the amount of work that, that we're doing, the size of our team, you're definitely seeing a substantial team, you're definitely seeing a substantial return on investment for the support the county has given. So thank you so much for your support. We really appreciate it and considering our budget requests. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any lights yet. Mr. Volkey, no questions? He's usually, he usually leads us off. I don't have any questions, but I meet with y'all regularly. So I certainly appreciate all that you do in my community and I'm looking forward to some of the initiatives and seeing where we go with everything. It's exciting. It's an exciting time. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thanks.
And last but not least, Dr. Pam Brown, welcome. Come on down. Well, I'll let you get settled and let you introduce your team and then we'll get going. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Pam Brown, Partnership for Children, Youth and Families. And with me, I have Julie Van Schyver, who is our Fiscal Officer. And Darlene, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, I'm Darlene Flynn with Budget Office. Thank you. Can we just second, their budget starts on page 335 in the proposed budget book. Let me go ahead and open this.
Can I go ahead? There we go. I thought I'd start with the value of the partnership. As you can see, served almost 100,000 residents last year, 21 programs, lots of partners, lots of lead initiatives. We have 35 employees. We're a very, very diverse group, majority African-American. Actually, I think we have six Spanish speakers now. And probably the best news for all of you, we bring in 4 million non-county dollars to the county every year through our grant writing. The changes and enhancements for the budget for 2025, I'm going to go through each one of these individually, but you can see we have a childcare specialist in there. We have our wonderful immigrant children legal services, Affordable Housing Trust Fund for homeless and prevention of homelessness for families. The food is a big one, guys, and most of this is going to the food bank. And then we're asking for some increase in our administrative support. So let me try and explain that to you. I think the first thing to note is that childcare continues to be a huge issue, not just in this county, but really throughout the nation. It is a model that is very difficult to support and we are seeing a decreasing supply of childcare in the county all the way through to 2026. It is extremely expensive for families. It is a very over-legislated business. So back probably two or three years ago now, in the middle of the pandemic, we really began to focus on childcare. We created a collective agenda for early childhood. And through that agenda, everybody who worked with us, and it was hundreds of people throughout the county that built the vision and mission for childcare, we created a childcare specialist position partly from ARPA dollars, but we also got some grant dollars. And that person does a whole host of things, including, and this is really important, navigating providers and parents through the childcare system, which is very, very difficult to navigate. She also tracks and writes grants, tracks and advocates for legislation, coordinates our newly-created childcare task force, and will be the grant support for the new Patty Center that we're hoping to bring to Brooklyn Park. We had hoped to support that fully by MSD this year, but they are really still settling down in terms of how to use Blueprint. They have a new superintendent who's an early childhood specialist, so we're hoping for that. But we are asking for you to help us support that childcare specialist position. We really don't want that work to stop. It's so important for, obviously, for our zero-to-fives and their parents. Our immigrant children's legal services, we've been operating that for almost, I guess, four years now. It was funded through ARPA. It's one of the few that we're asking to continue to fund. And it's because honestly, it's such a wonderful program and it does exactly what you would want to do. These are youth who come into the country legally through special circumstances, but they need help to get their legal status sorted when they arrive in the county. So it's a partnership with the Annapolis Immigration Justice Network. We receive a small amount of the dollars for a family navigator position that helps the youth navigate through the various services, including getting them into school or jobs and so on. The Justice Network does the legal work at an extremely reduced cost. The program's got a really successful rate and honestly, these are the youth who are going to be the people who fill our labor shortages, who become our productive residents. We are, just a quick story, we're working with a 17-year-old this, at the moment. He arrived in the county with literally the clothes he stood up in and a host family to go to. He is now at South River High School. He has two jobs. He works in the week for a restaurant. He works at the weekend for a construction company. He is delighted to be here. He was amazed to get clothes from us and to get the sort of support he's received. He is the example of the sorts of people who will build our future here in the county. Just a picture of the food bank and all of the different pantries that, you know, photos and pictures are worth a thousand words, right? So big ask for food, the majority of it, I think you know, is going to the food bank, our Anarundel County Food Bank. Last year, we created a food council and we have a position that creates, that manages and coordinates that food council. And we have created a strategic roadmap for the county over the next three years. And I think what's important here, guys, is really food pantries are not the answer to hunger. There is a whole set of changes in behaviors, in changes in economics, and various other strategies that we need to put into place. And they are the sorts of things that the food council are working on. The issue as we are at the moment is that the people who are most impacted by the pandemic are the people who are recovering the most slowly. So what with the debt they built up during the pandemic, the fact that rents have gone up extraordinarily, electric has gone up extraordinarily, you all know what's happening in the grocery stores. So many, many residents, working families in our county are using food banks so they can pay their rent. So this is not the time to stop the pantries. Because what we are going to do if we do that is create this cascade of economic issues for families who cannot afford to have that happen. We have over 50,000 residents who are food insecure. We've got 17 food deserts in the counties. Our pantries, our pantries served 706,000 meals. That's just what came out of all of the pantries and our own pantries across the county. We are actually, the partnership has done the disproportionately underserved food pantries. We are going to put that money in the county food bank pot. They are going to do all the buying. We are going to do all the organizing and all of this sort of distribution sites for food. We think that's going to be an excellent partnership. But during this year, we're also going to be working with the food bank to figure out how can we reduce this by some of our strategies, but also by finding other places for, who are willing to both donate and give money for food. I think we have to move back to some of our old behaviors with churches, with others, but we need time to do that. So that's why this ask seems as big as it is. And almost, it's about 1.4 million will actually go to the food bank. We're also asking for a 3% caller for our food coordinator. We're asking for more in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This has been an extremely successful fund for us in terms of housing families who are honestly living all over the county in hotels, sometimes in cars and hotels, sometimes with other families. These are the families who are actually not considered homeless by the federal government, but we know jolly well are homeless, although many of them don't want to be considered homeless. Last year, we served over 217 families, but we turned away 331. Now, as of last month, these figures are wrong. We now have only 30 families on our waiting list, so we're doing really, really well there. But our case managers really have had unmanageable caseloads. It's too hard. The thing about housing homeless families is that it is an intensive case management job because you really have to look at everything. You have to look at all of the things that they are eligible for, that they might not have figured out how to apply for. You've got to look at underemployment. Many of them are employed, but they're underemployed. You've got to look at things like mental health issues. So it really takes six months to a year to really rehouse a family successfully. Because of the increased costs, because of the shortage of affordable housing, families are spending longer in hotels. That is extremely costly. So the quicker we can house families, it is actually much more cost-effective than having them live in hotels. The cost of housing a family has at least doubled since 2019. We're making a small administrative support ask and it's really to do with what has happened in the partnership over the last probably six or seven years. We're now at a staff of 35. We're asking for a 0.75 of a person. We can find a way to fund the other quarter of it. We're trying to stabilize the agency. We have really grown too big for our own administration. I'm basically, I'm supervising far too many people at this point and I need to concentrate on fundraising and administration and compliance. The more federal, state, and other dollars we get, the more difficult it gets to administer. And frankly, sooner or later, I would like to leave the partnership. And so I need to build myself a succession plan that lifts up and builds a career ladder for my staff, but also has someone ready to take over so that I don't leave the county in the lurch when I go. So mostly, I want to make sure that the partnership continues to do the fantastic work that we have done lo these many years. My staff are contract employees. They don't get retirement. They just are all on yearly contracts. We find the benefits for them every year. Julie and I are also contract employees. I won't get a golden handshake when I leave, but I will look back at all of the families and children we will make and that will be my golden handshake for all these years. And with that, that is our budget. And I thank all of you for the hard work that all of you do. I know that you do it for very little and it is extremely difficult. So thank you very, very much for all you do. Now I'll answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Mr. Volkey.
Ms. Rodvian can go first if she wants.
Oh, Ms. Rodvian.
She was it quicker.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I clearly understood. I was flipping through the book and I couldn't find the page number that had your, that had your budget. I'm sure it's in here because I know I saw it earlier, but I wanted to just double check. You mentioned, you really drew attention to the childcare specialist and the administrative support. Are those currently funded or are those things that you need restored?
So they are currently, one is currently funded by ARPA.
That the childcare specialist was funded by ARPA last year, or this year, I'm sorry. And then the administrative position is a hodgepodge of funding. We have 21 different funding sources. So what happens is we have to try to pull all those together to equal one position and it's a nightmare. And I think some of it, you know, is to just pay people a living wage. Like I said, most of the grants we get, they don't provide any administrative support. It's all for the direct service. So we have to find this money and pay benefits because we feel like that's a human right and we pay benefits. But like again, we don't have any retirement or anything like that. So you have to pay, you know, somewhat of a decent wage to get people to stay. I mean, I'm in my 20th year and I stay. I don't know why, but I do.
So Councilwoman Rodvian, did you ask about two positions? One was the childcare.
The childcare specialist. And maybe let me just phrase it in a different way. Are there things that you need us to make amendments to have sufficient funding? Because when you say it's funded this year, I'm assuming that you mean for FY '24.
Yes.
And so it's not funded for FY '25? And so I want to make sure.
No, these are funded. And in the FY, these are in the proposed budget. These positions.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they are.
In our proposed budget, they are funded. I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine. I just, the way you drew attention to them made me think. I wanted to double check and make sure that they were there and that wasn't something that you were, that you were needing us to restore that, you know, hadn't been granted in the budget presented to you. Okay. So everything in the, you've got everything in the budget that you need?
We do.
Okay.
Thank you, yes.
And we always try to find a part of that money with grant funds.
So we don't charge you for the full amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to that childcare specialist as well. The write-up that you have on the slide talks about them advocating for legislation. And you mentioned how we're an over-legislated state when it comes to childcare. And I agree with you. And I agree that I think a big part of why we're seeing this decline is the lack of support for that and the just ridiculous environment these people are being operated, forced to operate in. What is this specialist doing at the state level? Because obviously, it's not us, right? It's not a county-level issue. It's a state-level issue. What are they doing to be able to try to fix this? How is that moving at the state level? What types of things are they looking at advocating for? I'm curious about that because to me, that seems like a worthwhile endeavor for us to say to the state, here's how you're handicapping all of us and thereby hurting all of our citizens.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
That is just the best question.
Okay.
So the person in that position has been working with a small group of people. One who runs a childcare center and then we have some other providers and then we have some childcare experts. And what we have done is to really dig down into the issues with MSD around both code and to some extent, the legislation and start to whittle down a list of recommendations. We are going to present that at our Childcare Summit in September. We are going to send it to all of the legislators. We are inviting our local legislative delegation during Childcare Day in Annapolis. We visited as many legislators as we could get to related to some of the issues around over-legislation. And it is the state of Maryland because there are other states that do not do that and they are far better for it because they build all sorts of really wonderful fluid, parent-led systems. Can't do any of that here. So that's where we're at. We are after that high-level code and legislation that is causing the issues for our childcare providers. And they really, I mean, they are so overwhelmed. So yeah, so we're on it.
Just to follow up on that, I have some friends that just moved from Maryland to Delaware with three young children. They were floored by how much less expensive childcare was in Delaware than in Maryland. So yeah. With the food bank, I hear everything you're saying about the need and I guess my question would be, you had made a statement, and I don't mean to throw your words at you, please don't take it that way, but you said now is not the time to cut this back, right? These people who are needing this assistance, they still need it. So this is not the moment. I would ask you this question, and I think you answered it somewhat because you talked about we're looking at ways to sort of taper off and to get back to what we used to do. Have those conversations not been happening prior to now? Or what's been the status? Because everybody's known these ARPA funds and the CARES funds were going to run out. We knew that we were sort of gradually spending them down. Everyone knew there wasn't a, you know, new tranche of money that was coming in. So what's been the status of those conversations to sort of wane off or taper from this now as opposed to whenever?
So it's a really good question and it's something I think that we've all talked about. I think for the people who serve those with less, it has been a perfect storm. Because yes, we knew the ARPA dollars were going away, but what we didn't reckon with was people attending church less, people giving dollars to churches less, the churches themselves having less, some changes at the Maryland Food Bank. So while the anticipation of ARPA going away, we always knew there was a whole set of things we didn't, and especially around recovery. So what's happening with housing at the moment just spills onto everything, just like electricity, just like everything else. So when you hear about people being unhappy with the economy, and you know, for people like us, I'm not unhappy with the economy, you know, I think it's doing okay. But when you look at those people who are in that 200,000, who struggle every day to make it, it is a very, very difficult time. And then for those at the bottom, it's just going to take longer. And so the conversations are happening. Everybody knows that this level of support can't continue, that we will have to go back through all methods. We have, even the Latter Day Saints have stood up just recently and started talking about how they can do more in support. So I think it will come back. I do think it will come back. And then I think some of the decisions we make as a county around how people access food, how we encourage grocery stores to come here, all of that is sort of part of the picture of it, but it's long-term.
Appreciate that answer. Appreciate that answer. Can I ask another follow-up?
You can.
All right. With the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, with the 1.3 million dollars there, so, and, and I heard this a little bit with ACDS, and I didn't ask the question there, but I think it dovetails into what you're talking about, too. In some ways, the concern that I see with this is we're creating a class of people who are going to become permanent renters, right? We're not, I, I'm not necessarily seeing that sort of homeownership model that I think historically has been the, the dream, right? Or the goal of, let's try to get people to own their own place. Let's get them out of that cycle of renting. And it seems like with some of these programs and what we're funding and the creation of more rental units and all of that, I guess, what does that discussion look like from your point of view? Is that still the model? Is it still the idea that we want to see people purchase their own properties? Or has that shifted and we now think renting is a better option for people? I guess I'm just trying to understand what's the goal, because I thought I knew what the goal was before, but it seems like a lot of things are driving in a different direction for that. And, and maybe we realized the goal was never going to happen, and so we changed the goal. But that's what I want to understand. It's like, what's the thinking from you being the people who are on the ground?
So I think we've always operated, with the partnership at least, have always operated a self-sufficiency model. So we have always said, we don't want people in government programs. It's actually, they're healthier and happier when they're not, right? And it's actually cheaper to have a mortgage than to, to pay rent, as we are now averaging.
Unquestionably.
Two bedrooms, $2,000, you know. So, so really, that's the trajectory we want to move our families into. But when we are meeting them, their lives are in chaos. They've lost everything. They've, they've even lost their birth certificates for their kids. So you really are starting from, they're, they're usually underemployed, all got a seasonal job, all got two seasonal jobs. You're never going to make credit to get a mortgage when you're there. Our aim is always to lift people up, to figure out, okay, you're underemployed. Let's see, let's see what else we can do. Can we, can we get you into a career? Can we get you to work for us? Where can we get, where can we get you to? So that's always the aim. The aim is always to move people onward and upward. I don't want to leave people in traps because they are traps. Renting now is a bit of a trap because rents are going up faster than anybody can make money. So really, we, we really do want to do that. Now, I, I think it's, it's problematic because we've got to get people's credit scores up, right? So, but, but we, but that's our goal. Our goal is not to keep people in poverty, renting and scrabbling to make do.
And to keep them not from having an eviction on their record, because once they have that.
That's a nightmare.
You, you, you won't be able to buy a home.
Okay. And so with that, I don't see anybody else yet.
Well, I'll just chime in a minute. Because I do, we didn't, we didn't ask any questions of ACDS, but I would, I would argue that the, the goal of the Housing Trust Fund or any of the work we're, we're doing in the county towards affordable housing is, is on parallel tracks. Of, of course, we want to encourage and incentivize and, and support homeownership, but we also need to understand it's not as simple as saying we want to steer everybody towards homeownership. Probably everyone here rented at some point in their lives. You know, renting is a part of, of life, and usually you're starting out in, in a rental or at some, at some point. But, you know, housing scarcity is, it's just not as simple as this conversation we're having today about how we're going to, there's, there's tax implications. There's, you know, as much as a mortgage might be cheaper than rent, I know I have a lot of home improvement that I need to be doing to maintain my home, right? So homeownership is not necessarily even everyone's choice. It, it, it used to be, it used to be the, the wealth generator. It, it doesn't always work that way anymore with the way the, the housing market is and the way that the tax, tax policy has gone towards homeownership. It really only benefits those who are owning at the, the higher echelon of, of property value. So we have a lot of work to do as a country, as a, as a state and a, and a locality here, but I'll let Mr. Volkey continue to ask his questions.
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, I, I actually agree with you. I read an article that talked about, does homeownership still equal what it once did? Which is why I was asking about the goal, and is that still the goal? Because these hidden costs that you don't recognize when you're purchasing a home, some of the down payment costs, the maintenance costs, et cetera. So that's why I was asking that question, to try to figure out, had something changed with the professionals and the people in the field who know this or not? It sounds like it hasn't, but, but I, I recognize what Councilwoman Pickard is saying, so. So with the 1.3 million dollars, that money, I, I was not a hundred percent clear from what you said and what's on the slide. What is that money going to? Is that still rental assistance, or what is the 1.3 being used for?
So it's used for case management.
Okay.
So that intensive work with families to get them on their feet so they can pay their rent and hopefully one day become completely self-sufficient, including a mortgage. So, so really, and the intensive case management is intense because by the time the families have hit homelessness, there is so much gone wrong and so much to be put right. So it's, it's that. It's to help with a security deposit. It's to help with first month because obviously they don't have that. There's some, there is some eviction prevention within that. I, I don't know much, Julie probably does. But we have moved away from eviction prevention and back to our old pre-pandemic behaviors, which was always about intensive case management to sort of work with families to deal with the issues so they can become self-sufficient.
And so when you say intensive case management, are you referring to this 1.3 million is being used to hire contractual staff to then do the case management work?
Correct.
Or is this money directly going into the programs that you talked about?
It's.
And how's that break up?
So it's both.
Okay.
I, I'm going to have to turn to Julie.
We've lost two positions from ARPA funds that were coming through MSDE or from the local school system. So that's going to be three, four positions, and then the rest is client assistance funds. And they can be other obstacles to self-sufficiency, to maybe a car repair because they can't get to work, or a bus pass, or, you know, we try to limit, we, our, our spending because we refer out to other sources of funding in the county. So primarily, it's rental assistance and the security deposit. But other things do come up because most of these families are just one, you know, one thing, you know, one step away from, you know, they can't pay this $500, they're going to get evicted, you know? And that's the problem is the evictions, because once that happens, then you have to put them in a hotel. And the hotels, I just can't even tell you how much it costs to get them out through the process of getting a voucher, a temporary voucher, the ACDS program, which is a great program. But in the meantime, they have, you have to spend all this money on them. If you don't have that money, then they're on the street. And, you know, so it, it's just the cycle of it. But the case management is the most important part because they need so many different degrees of help with their kids. You know, we have all these cricket teams. I know you've heard about them before, but, you know, they come and they have so many different issues. And then they just can't pay their bills, but they have all these other issues, too, you know? So that case management really brings the family together, looks at the whole family. And I think that's really, makes the difference of keeping them housed, not just paying the rent. Because we found out with, during the pandemic, that doesn't help. I mean, it's great for temporarily, but that does not move them to self-sufficiency.
I have to think my last question.
Okay.
Thanks. So I assume that like ACDS, you all keep statistics on some of this. You have information. You know who the families are. I mean, you've got it in your report, like you know how many families you're serving, how many are on the waitlist, all that. You produce the Poverty Amidst Plenty report every couple of years, so that's like a big undertaking for you guys. What about, do you share that data? Like, how does that work in terms of the accessibility of other people to get that data, not just in the county, like citizens writ large, but other entities? How does that all work?
So that's a partnership with the community foundations. So I write it, they produce it, and then I go around the county doing mass presentations on the data. So that's the first way it gets shared.
Okay.
And then because everybody knows about it, everybody sort of waits for it to come out, so we're just starting a new one, actually.
I was going to say Wendy's the next one.
So the next one will be probably between February and May of 2025. We're actually pulling the data now.
Okay.
So I'll be going around and doing my thing, and then I send it out to not-for-profits in Word so they can use it for grant writing and a good relationship with both the college and the school system. So we get it out in every way we can. I, I have no proprietary over it at all. I want everybody to have it, everybody to use it, and, and use it so that we bring improvements, right? That, otherwise, data is just data. And, and I think what we're gonna, it's going to be interesting this time. I wish the census was, I wish I trusted the 2020 census more. I don't. But I do think that we're going to be able to see some trends. By, by 2020, end of '24, we will see some trends. But I don't think the story of the pandemic is even a tenth told, yet, and I don't think it will be for another 10 years, and that's the truth of it. I just don't, I don't think we know how much damage it did.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any more lights, but I just want to thank y'all for your work. I know from, from the constituent service side of the House and the work that at least my team does, the partnership along with all, many of the other agencies that were before us, the way y'all collaborate and work together and, and support each other to support our most vulnerable residents is just, it's, it's stunning. So thank you for all that you do, and that's a wrap today, guys.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate you.
Thank you, darling, and I want to thank our budget analyst, who has been wonderful, so wonderful.
Thank you, darling.
Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'd better.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
The county council is adjourned until May 15, 2024, at 7:00 PM, when we will hold our first public hearing on the FY25 budget and Lythicum Elementary School. See you there.